Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the October 7, 2014 Business Meeting of the Washington County Board of Education. We have a quorum of members present. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Mrs. Williams is not feeling well today, so she won't be able to join us and sense her regrets. To begin the meeting, I'd like to introduce Haley Ernst. She is a fourth grade student at Clear Spring Elementary School. She is going to lead us all in the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence. Haley?
I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Haley, don't go away. Would you like to introduce the people you brought with you today?
That's my grandma, Joanne Klein. That's my grandfather, Harold Klein. That's my mom, Carrie Ernst. That's my dad, Andrew Ernst, and my little brother, Brady Ernst.
Very good. And where do your mom and dad both work?
My mom works at Clear Spring High School. My dad works at Clear Spring Elementary School.
Two teachers. You're an education-centered family, which is great. So tell me, what's your favorite subject in school?
Reading.
Reading. Good for you. And what do you like to do when you're not in school?
I like to be fashionable.
Be fashionable?
I love everything that revolves around fashion.
Do you make your own clothes?
No, but I wish.
You wish. Someday, maybe you can, right? And what's your favorite kind of fashion to wear?
Glitter or sparkles.
Well, who doesn't like glitter and sparkles, right? One other thing we should point out is that Mrs. Fisher taught one, if not both, of your parents? Both of your parents?
So did I.
And so did Mrs. Harshman. Is there anything else you'd like to tell us about you? Any questions from board members?
Haley, I love your shoes.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for coming and starting our meeting. And let's give Haley a big round of applause for doing such a great job. Are there any other students or guests that members would like to introduce? Okay. That brings us to the approval of the agenda.
Mr. President, I'd like to move to approve the agenda as presented by the Agenda Committee in aisle 2.
Motion by Mrs. Brightman and seconded by Mrs. Fisher to approve the agenda. Is there any discussion? Not all those in favor? Are there any opposed? The motion passes six to zero and the student member concurs. That brings us to the minutes.
Mr. President, we have three sets of minutes. One from a work session on September 16, closed session also on that date, and then regular business meeting on September 16. I would move for adoption of the minutes from each of those meetings.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Bailey, seconded by Mrs. Brightman to approve the minutes. Is there any discussion or any corrections to the minutes? If not, all those in favor of approval? Are there any opposed? The motion passes six to zero. The student member concurs. Next, we have public comment. We have one individual who signed up to speak, Mr. Perini. And Haley and family, you're welcome to stay for as much of the meeting as you want, but you don't need to. We're not going to think you're rude if you go back to class or back to school, so.
Good afternoon, Dr. Harding, Dr. Wilcox, and members of the board. My name is Peter Perini, and I am a candidate for the Washington County Board of Education. And I'll be brief with my comments today. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to speak to you about the academic hub in downtown Hagerstown. First, thank you for recognizing and acting on the importance of the role of Washington County Public Schools in supporting downtown Hagerstown, our county seat. This project represents opportunities on several levels: public-private partnership, the project itself being an economic development project, and representing the larger picture of the role that Washington County Public Schools play in economic development in our community. Public-private partnerships are becoming more and more popular as they are leveraging taxpayer dollars to get more bang for the buck. They create buy-in from the community and create diversification in our economy. As an economic development project, as you know, I'm a supporter of revitalizing downtown Hagerstown. As I said, it's our county seat, and it is the center of our community. As goes the city of Hagerstown, so goes Washington County. Washington County Public School has a role in, a larger role in, economic development. And this project represents the larger picture. When a company looks to move to Washington County, one of the first things they look at is the public education system. They want to see the quality of education that their potential workforce will have. In many cases, they want to see what kind of schools their own children may be attending. I believe that the better the education the students receive, then they are better equipped for better jobs. Better jobs means higher pay and better benefits. All of that leads to a more rich and vibrant economy in our community. So to me, the connection between the Washington County Public Schools and economic development of our community is not just a theoretical one, but one can directly link the two. So thank you for having the vision to move forward with this project, the academic hub in downtown Hagerstown. It is something that will have positive results for a long time to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perini. Are there any brief responses to Mr. Perini's comments? Seeing none? Thank you. I'm sure we'll all have more to say about the hub as it comes up on the agenda. Is there a motion to suspend Policy KD for the purposes of determining whether any members of the audience who have not signed up to speak would like to speak during public comment?
So moved.
Is there a second? Motion by Mrs. Brightman, seconded by Mr. Ridenhour. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Are there any opposed? Motion passes five to zero, one abstention, and the student member concurs. Is there anybody in the audience who has not signed up who'd like the opportunity to speak? Okay, great. We will move on to new business. First item under new business is the consent agenda.
Mrs. Freeman, I know you have a number of items on the consent agenda, but I would like to just talk about one of the items upfront, and then you can go ahead and do the full discussion. Board members, as I spoke to you earlier, I wanted to say to our larger community something about the Stride Academy and the LTS proposal before you. Today, the board is being asked to support purchase of a supplemental resource for our elementary students. The program is called Stride Academy by LTS Education Systems. This program is an adaptive program based on learning systems, which the system is an adaptive-based game gaming system. The system was piloted this summer with much success. Matt Semler, who you'll hear from in a little while, is our Director of Elementary Programs, and he's carried the recommendation forward through the entire pilot to the purchase process. I wanted the board and the community to know that I am on the Board of Educational Advisors to LTS, the parent company of Stride Academy. My role as a member of the Board of Advisors is to talk with the founder, Brian Schulman, about the intersection between gaming and student learning, to offer my thoughts and my observations about how to use this technology and how this technology can be used by classroom teachers, including how the technology is used to further the goals of improving student academic performance. I'm currently talking to Mr. Schulman about the value of mid- and long-term gaming, as you should also know. And you may recognize the value of long-term gaming because for a year now, we have been talking about long-term gaming at Western Heights Middle School, as we look to produce virtual courses that involve virtual worlds, gaming technologies, and the Maryland State Corps. On this advisory committee, I served with Dr. Bill Daggett, who is an internationally-recognized leader in education, and with Dr. Raymond McNulty, who is also an internationally-recognized leader in education. Dr. Daggett, as many of you know, was the founder of the International Center for Leadership in Education and the developer of the Rigor and Relevance Framework, which is used and guides many of our classrooms today. Dr. McNulty has served as a superintendent, a state superintendent. He was the chief funding officer for the Gates Foundation for some years. He is the immediate past president and chief learning officer of Penn Foster Education, which is the largest online learning consortium in the country. And he has most recently been named the dean of the School of Education at Southern New Hampshire University, which many of you know is the fastest-growing university, online university, in the nation. I want to reiterate what I've already told our purchasing officer, Mrs. Freeman, and others within the organization, that I receive no compensation or special consideration for my service. There is not any arrangement for deferred or delayed compensation. And I use my personal time for any interaction with the board or with Mr. Schulman. Knowing all of that, I told the members of my staff, if they choose to proceed with this purchase because of its direct benefit to teachers and students, while I would fully support it, I would not be the one who brought it forward to the board. But I simply wanted to share with you that at the end of the day, I think, working with the likes of Dr. Daggett, Mr. McNulty, or Dr. McNulty and the team at LTS, much like some of my work with EDRI, makes me a better superintendent, someone who is better able to advance and advocate on behalf of young people in Washington County. But I wanted to be fully open and fully transparent and let the board know that I do serve on the Board of Educational Advisors for this company. And once again, I will reiterate that I stand to make no compensation. There will be not one dollar exchange, not one penny exchange between me and the principals at LTS or any of their sub-companies. With that said, I can turn it back to you now to move the procurement process forward, unless a board member wanted to ask me a question.
Are there any questions for any board members?
I was just going to make a brief comment. I think what we've heard expressed here today by Dr. Wilcox was one of the significant reasons I supported his coming to Washington County as a superintendent, was the network and relationships he had developed over years of private sector work as well as public sector work. And I think it only serves us better. So I appreciate the comment, the full disclosure, and that's how we do business here. Thank you.
Any other comments from board members?
I appreciate the forthrightness and the clarity with both the board and with the public. I think certainly I want a superintendent who is engaged with educational leaders in Washington County, in the state of Maryland, across the country, and around the world. And I think the value that that brings back to our school system is repaid many, many, many times over, even though you get no compensation for a lot of that work.
I'm paid well by this board, so thank you.
It's part of being a professional, and we appreciate the professional way that you've gone about letting us know what that arrangement is. So thank you.
I expressed my appreciation as well. Five procurements are on the agenda this afternoon. I'm going to go ahead and get started. I hope you can hear me okay.
It's not very loud.
It feels like I'm not transmitting very well. But anyway, I can speak up. Oh, there we go. The first bid solicitation was for testing and inspection services for West City Elementary School. We included in the board's report a tabulation of the bids that we received. Tests are needed to establish the acceptability of performance standards as they pertain to geotechnical soil conditions, concrete, masonry, structural steel, fluid-applied membrane, air barrier, asphalt paving. Those are just some examples of the core tests that we'll be purchasing under the contract. We may purchase additional inspections and/or tests at any time during the contract period. A word is recommended to Hillis Karnes Engineering Associates of Williamsport, Maryland, at their bid unit rates. They were the lowest bidder based on the evaluation criteria that we utilized for this solicitation. Second on the agenda is a solicitation for third-party administration of our 403B and 457B retirement plans. We solicited for a three-year contract with options for extension. These services are needed in anticipation of adopting a multi-vendor platform for retiree investments for 403B and 457 programs beginning April 1 of 2015. That solicitation hasn't come to the board yet, but it is in process. Proposals for these TPA services were evaluated based on the evaluation criteria in the solicitation document. The evaluation committee included representatives of the school systems unions. The evaluation committee recommends TSA Consulting Group be awarded this work at a price of $8 per full-time employee per year, $22,020 per year for a three-year commitment of $66,060. The third procurement is to purchase VMware software. This is a renewal and an upgrade of the virtualization software that is used for maintaining the current network hardware configuration and the efficient operation of the school system's computer network. Prices on that contract are discounted at a greater rate than would have been available under the National Joint Alliance contract, so we have a good price for this particular order. Fourth, as Dr. Wilcox mentioned in his introductory remarks, is a contract for services to LTD... get it right.
LTS.
LTS. Thank you, Dr. Wilcox. This procurement was brought, this particular purchase was brought to the Procurement Review Committee by the instructional folks who had the opportunity to work with the software. The software was used and piloted in our summer school program this past summer. And as Dr. Wilcox mentioned, we had favorable results from that experience. This Stride Academy's program is unique in that it provides 24-hour, seven-days-a-week access to their web-based adaptive learning program and their related support services and training that go along with that. The software objectives are aligned with WCPS's instructional core objectives. And the total price tag for that program used in our 27 elementary schools is $231,000. Lastly, on the agenda this afternoon, 1,020 wireless access points. The IT department is requesting approval of this order. These access points will be purchased and installed in schools throughout the school system. They are needed to increase speed and capacity on our wireless networks. Recognizing that we have a significant investment in our wireless network systems, the instructional technology folks took a look at the equipment that we've currently purchased and has a plan for standardizing some of the buildings to the Zeris brand wireless systems. And the new Arrowhive wireless systems, as recommended, will be standards in other school locations. This will provide maximum coverage of our wireless connectivity for students and staff within our buildings. The installation of the wireless access points will be handled by the instructional department. They may very well have to purchase some supplemental services. Their goal being to have these wireless access points installed this calendar year. We have a very good price. We're utilizing a Baltimore County Public Schools bid that had good competition. We have a steep discount of 47% from list. And I say with confidence, I don't know that if Washington County Public Schools issued its own bid, we could do as well. So I do support the pricing that is in front of the board this afternoon for the purchase of these 1,020 wireless access points. That said, if you have questions, I'll do my best. Otherwise, I'll find somebody here who can help me answer those for you.
Thank you, Ms. Freeman. Is there a motion?
Mr. President, I've moved to approve the bids requisitions for testing and inspection services, West City Elementary School to Hillis Karnes Engineering Incorporated at bid unit price, third-party administration of 403B and 457B retirement plans to TSA Consulting Group at $8 per employee per year or $66,060 estimate. Total for a three-year term. VMware software renewal and upgrade to CDW Government at $50,970. Contracted services, Stride Academy Instructional Program at 27 elementary schools to LTS Educational Systems at $231,000. And 1,020 wireless access points to Bell Tech Logics Incorporated at $559,521.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Bailey to approve the consent agenda, seconded by Mr. Ridenhour. Is there any discussion or any questions? Mrs. Fisher?
I have two questions for Mr. Semler.
Okay.
Good afternoon. In reading your letter and information that you provided about the Stride Academy, you talked about the games that can be accessed by the students. Can I assume that the games cannot be accessed until a student does well on a unit or lesson?
Correct. It's actually, the questions that the students answer, they receive a token-based economy. It's a virtual tokens, and they receive a certain number of tokens for a question they answer correctly on the first try. If they get it wrong, they go through a tutorial session to answer it, and they get one token for the second attempt. They earn a certain number of tokens, and then they can play a 60-second game for 14 tokens. It's a very highly engaging way to do it. My kids at home have been trying it, and they love it. So it's not just to play games. They have to earn to get to those games.
Very good. And the other question was, in your letter, you indicated that there was potential for revenue generation with this program. Can you explain that?
That's something that we're just scratching the surface with. Further on down the road, once we have an opportunity for the teachers to begin using the system in their classrooms and the students have an opportunity to use it, if teachers develop lessons that are helping the students achieve their goals or to meet certain standards, the teachers can then share those lessons on LTS. And there is some opportunities for teachers to almost sell those lessons to other teachers across the county. So we've had some just preliminary talks with the LTS company, and that's something that we're going to look further into once we get the actual program rolling into the students' hands.
Very good. Thank you.
Sure. Mrs. Brightman?
On number two, the third-party administration for 403B and 457 retirement plans. Mrs. Freeman, in your summary or comments, I think I understood you to say that you were working or your office group, someone, is working on an RFP for the multi-vendor that we're putting out there. I guess my thought was, or understanding, is that this third-party consulting group would actually be informing that process as well. I want to be sure we're not getting ahead of input from the professionals on this.
You're absolutely correct. They'll be on board at least a week or two to provide counsel on the solicitation before we move it forward.
So we're not so far down in preparing this RFP that we couldn't adjust to information from this administrator?
We're strictly just in a draft, at the stage of draft of the solicitation document.
Perfect. Thank you.
Any other discussion on the consent agenda? Mrs. Fisher?
I'm going to ask one more question. The wireless access points. Did I correctly understand that with the installation of these devices, we won't have enough wireless generation for every student in our schools to operate a computer or a tablet at the same time?
That's what I'm told, yes.
So we will be able eventually to take the PARC test on these devices at the same time without killing the system somewhere?
Once we have the hardware in place as well.
Beginning April 1 of 2015. That solicitation hasn't come to the Board yet, but it is in process. Proposals for these TPA services were evaluated based on the evaluation criteria in the solicitation document. The evaluation committee included representatives of the school systems unions. The evaluation committee recommends TSA Consulting Group be awarded this work at a price of $8 per full-time employee per year, $22,020 per year, for a three-year commitment of $66,060. The third procurement is to purchase VMware software. This is a renewal and an upgrade of the virtualization software that is used for maintaining the current network hardware configuration and the efficient operation of the school system's computer network. Prices on that contract are discounted at a greater rate than would have been available under the National Joint Alliance contract, so we have a good price for this particular order. Fourth, as Dr. Wilcox mentioned in his introductory remarks, is a contract for services to LT D. Get it right.
LTS.
LTS, thank you, Dr. Wilcox. This procurement was brought, this particular purchase was brought to the procurement review committee by the instructional folks who had the opportunity to work with the software. The software was used and piloted in our summer school program this past summer, and as Dr. Wilcox mentioned, we had favorable results from that experience. This Stride Academy's program is unique in that it provides 24-hour, seven-days-a-week access to their web-based adaptive learning program and their related support services and training that go along with that. The software objectives are aligned with WCPS's instructional core objectives, and the total price tag for that program used in our 27 elementary schools is $231,000. Lastly, on the agenda this afternoon, 1,020 wireless access points. The IT department is requesting approval of this order. These access points will be purchased and installed in schools throughout the school system. They're needed to increase speed and capacity on our wireless networks. Recognizing that we have a significant investment in our wireless network systems, the instructional technology folks took a look at the equipment that we've currently purchased and has a plan for standardizing some buildings to the Zeris brand wireless systems. And the new Arrowhive wireless systems, as recommended, will be standards in other school locations. This will provide maximum coverage of our wireless connectivity for students and staff within our buildings. The installation of the wireless access points will be handled by the instructional department. They may very well have to purchase some supplemental services. Their goal being to have these wireless access points installed this calendar year. We have a very good price. We're utilizing a Baltimore County Public Schools bid that had good competition. We have a steep discount of 47% from list, and I say with confidence, I don't know that if Washington County Public Schools issued its own bid, we could do as well. So I do support the pricing that is in front of the Board this afternoon for the purchase of these 1,020 wireless access points. That said, if you have questions, I'll do my best. Otherwise, I'll find somebody here who can help me answer those for you.
Thank you, Ms. Freeman. Is there a motion?
Mr. President, I've moved to approve the bid's requisitions for testing and inspection services. West City Elementary School to Hillis Karns Engineering Incorporated at a bid unit price. Third-party administration of 403B and 457B retirement plans to TSA Consulting Group at $8 per employee per year or $66,060 estimate. Total for a three-year term. VMware software renewal and upgrade to CDW Government at $50,970. Contracted services, Stride Academy Instructional Program at 27 elementary schools to LTS Educational Systems at $231,000. And 1,020 wireless access points to Bell Tech Logics Incorporated at $559,521.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Bailey to approve the consent agenda, seconded by Mr. Ridenhour. Is there any discussion or any questions? Mrs. Fisher?
I have two questions for Mr. Semler.
Okay.
In reading your letter and information that you provided about the Stride Academy, you talked about the games that can be accessed by the students. Can I assume that the games cannot be accessed until a student does well on a unit or lesson?
Correct. It's actually, the questions that the students answer, they receive a token-based economy. It's a virtual tokens, and they receive a certain number of tokens for a question they answer correctly on the first try. If they get it wrong, they go through a tutorial session to answer it, and they get one token for the second attempt. They earn a certain number of tokens, and then they can play a 60-second game for 14 tokens. It's a very highly engaging way to do it. My kids at home have been trying it, and they love it. So there is, it's not just to play games. They have to earn to get to those games.
Very good. And the other question was, in your letter, you indicated that there was potential for revenue generation with this program. Can you explain that?
That's something that we're just scratching the surface with. Further on down the road, once we have an opportunity for the teachers to begin using the system in their classrooms and the students have an opportunity to use it, if teachers develop lessons that are helping the students achieve their goals or to meet certain standards, the teachers can then share those lessons on LTS, and there is some opportunities for teachers to almost sell those lessons to other teachers across the county. So we've had some just preliminary talks with the LTS company, and that's something that we're going to look further into once we get the actual program rolling into the students' hands.
Very good. Thank you.
Sure.
Mrs. Breitman?
On number two, the third-party administration for 403B and 457 retirement plans. Mrs. Freeman, in your summary or comments, I think I understood you to say that you were working, or your office group, someone is working on an RFP for the multi-vendor that we're putting out there. I guess my thought was, or understanding, is that this third-party consulting group would actually be informing that process as well. I want to be sure we're not getting ahead of input from the professionals on this.
You're absolutely correct. They'll be on board at least a week or two to provide counsel on the solicitation before we move it forward.
So we're not so far down in preparing this RFP that we couldn't adjust to information from this administrator?
We're strictly just in a draft, at the stage of draft of the solicitation document.
Perfect. Thank you.
Any other discussion on the consent agenda? Mrs. Fisher?
I'm going to ask one more question. The wireless access points. Did I correctly understand that with the installation of these devices, we won't have enough wireless generation for every student in our schools to operate a computer or a tablet at the same time?
That's what I'm told, yes.
So we will be able eventually to take the PARC test on these devices at the same time without killing the system somewhere?
Once we have the hardware in place as well.
Right. Well, I know we need more computers.
So we started with the Juniper switches as part of that backbone that takes us out to the Internet. Now, we're working inside the building, trying to get to every classroom and every space in the building to make sure we have wireless access. So these are the backbone, the infrastructure pieces we've been working on over the last year to try to get that in place. So there's not frustrations. We buy more units, more devices. We're experiencing a great deal of frustration because students or teachers couldn't access because of, you know, low signal, or we just didn't have in that area of the building, or too many students getting kicked out because of the nature of the information being exchanged.
That's great. That's great. Thank you very much.
Mr. Bailey?
I think you answered, I think I caught it in your response, Mr. Michael, but this would reach out to areas such as the gymnasium, the cafeteria, where a computer might have to be used for, say, taking student attendance?
That's correct. The Arrowhive units, the 1,020 Arrowhive units along with those we already have at Russell Hicks in South will be used in a number of our buildings. The Zeris units that have already been purchased will be moved and saturated in other buildings so that we have like platforms in each of the buildings. But yes, that's our intention.
Is there any other discussion? If not, the questions on Mr. Bailey's motion to approve the consent agenda, all those in favor? Are there any opposed? The motion passes six to zero, and the student member concurs.
Thank you.
Thank you. It brings us to item two under New Business, which is the Comprehensive Maintenance Plan for FY 2016.
Good afternoon, Dr. Harding, Mrs. Breitman, members of the Board, Dr. Wilcox. Today, we're here for the third part of the state process in regards to facilities and maintenance. As the Board's aware, the Board is required to vote and approve our educational master plan, which they did back in June. Additionally, the Board is required to approve our capital improvement program, the CIP, which is really kind of our money request of both the local and state government. That was done back in September. And we're here with the last piece that's required to be submitted to the state, the Comprehensive Maintenance Plan. Basically, this plan demonstrates the state. It identifies very specific pieces that the state's required to take a look at, and what they really want to know is, does Washington County have a plan to take care of the facilities, maintain the investment of the state and local taxpayers in such a fashion that it will last for a long period of time, have a replacement cycle, those types of things? So that's the nature of this report, and we're requesting your approval at this time, and we'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Is there a motion to approve the Comprehensive Maintenance Plan for FY 16?
Mr. President, I move to accept the Comprehensive Maintenance Plan as presented by staff.
Is there a second?
Second, Mr. President.
Motion by Mr. Ridenhour to approve, seconded by Mr. Bailey. Is there any discussion? Mrs. Breitman?
To touch on the ADA situation initially, and for my colleagues and those following along, I think in the document, it's Chapter 5, page 55. Just to state what is already here, restate, we're at about a $10 million price tag to fully implement ADA throughout the county. We don't have that money, so what we do is deal with situations as they arise and as needed, which I understand that. I guess my thought is, is this something? I know that the state in the past has restricted certain money, set aside certain facility dollars like they did a couple of years ago for the vestibules, safety, and for HVAC issues, and with the General Assembly coming up here in January, whether there would be some interest from my colleagues and staff to maybe try to promote. I'm sure we're not the only county in the country with a pretty steep tag, price tag, on full compliance, so I'm just wondering where you might see that we could go to advocate for some restricted dollars for that.
Well, I think what we've seen out of restricted dollars in the past, they've come from the same pot of money that the CIP money comes from. So when it's restricted, while we might get our piece of the pie, it might be part of the same pie.
Well, now, didn't, excuse me, didn't they give us an additional $25,000 and restricted it? It was over and above the 250, 25 million.
But restricted, I believe it would have been part of the CIP originally. And there was air conditioning money this past year.
That was additional.
And we weren't eligible to take advantage of that. So as restrictions are applied, we certainly will be able to take advantage of ADA, but I don't know how that might be allocated. It certainly wouldn't hurt anything. We did a study. The Board approved a study of an architect and engineering. We went through all of our facilities. I believe at that time, the approximate ADA requirements were about $12 million. We've made steady progress on the list. We've helped prioritize that list into several categories. Of course, the elimination of some of the older schools, as we build new schools, all of those would be ADA compliant, and we expect this list to decrease. But it certainly wouldn't be something we'd be opposed to, to have additional ADA money, particularly if it was up and beyond CIP money.
Supplemental rather than supplanting, but, because I think we're going to be looking at our legislative core values tonight, and then that leads into our work session on priorities. And I was just thinking, maybe this could be one we could look at going forward to advocate. And then sort of in that same vein, but a little bit different, is the deferred maintenance. There have been many numbers on deferred maintenance over the years, and this $36 million, I guess what caught my attention was that we're reaching a point, a tipping point, that by 2017, which is not very far away, we're going to add another $19 million to that. So we're going to start seeing this go back up again, even though we've taken money in the past and tried to take care of some of those. Do most of our deferred maintenance, are they capitals, where we get state shares, or are they almost all local funded?
Most of the deferred maintenance, the priority ones, for instance, would be your boilers, chillers, roofs.
Which we'd get state.
Those, that's the biggest chunk. A lot of the painting and flooring and those type are done locally with either operation money or anything that we would get from the county. So the biggest chunk, probably percentage-wise, would be the state CIP money that we need.
So maybe there's an opportunity here. Again, when we look at CIP and we look at the boutique schools and alternative funding, maybe there's an opportunity there to try to get some additional dollars for some things that I'm sure other counties are struggling with as well. Okay. Thank you. Oh, sorry, one more?
Go for it.
Sorry. And this is just a personal issue that was brought to my attention and caught my interest, and I brought it forward at the Facilities Committee. It's the elopement issue with certain children with autism on the autism spectrum, and I would assume other special needs children might fall into this. When I look at the criteria, and I think it's, what, 34 points on the list, I know it took a while before we added open space to that criteria a few years ago, and I know we've added others. And I look at, there's several criteria. One is specialty instruction, one is safety, one is playgrounds, one is ADA. Seems like there'd be an opportunity in one of those to include, maybe in the specialized instruction, some way of looking at the facilities from the aspect of serving these special needs children and whether we need that perimeter fencing. So I don't know if you'd want to respond to that or not.
Much like the ADA issues, as we identify exact needs at individual schools, we try to make reasonable accommodations to take care of those issues. Fencing is something that's gotten to be a hot topic lately. We've got requests for fencing at quite a few areas, but we have to prioritize where do you stop the fence? Where does it go? All the way to the building, or does it just, do you just make a corral? So we're still trying to work with the school and the staff to try to figure out exactly what it is they need.
I guess my thought is, if it's in the criteria, it's something we pay attention to in a process, which I think is important to get an issue in a process, and then there's a way. I'm not always sure if we wait for a school system to bring the issue to our attention, that maybe they don't realize what the process is. I just offer that as a possibility. I think there is a concern. I'm not sure if you set one-size-fits-all. That's going to be a solution either. I think we do need to take it on a case-by-case.
Correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Bailey?
The chart that you do with the facilities assessment, middle and high school, page The accessibility under ADA seems to be the major portion of that assessment, I mean, as to where it's lacking. What are the particular concerns? Is it because of ramps or steps, or what is the big issue?
It's various things. Ramps, for instance, I can use Springfield Middle, for instance. Springfield Middle's a school that has ramps everywhere, but the ramps do not meet the current ADA code. So to meet the intent of the new ADA standards, those ramps would have to be redone, which is a major renovation for that school. There will be some door issues, door handles, but we've addressed most of those as we go forward. But restrooms are a big issue.
The wider doors.
Exactly. Where we've been able to, in some of the areas that have no ADA access for restrooms, we've gone in and renovated restrooms to take basically two stalls and make one, so it's large enough.
Thank you. That clarifies for me.
Are there other comments?
I want to thank you, Mr. Mills, and your team, Boyd and your team, and all the facilities folks for all you do to make sure that our schools are maintained and so that every morning when somebody switches the light, it goes on, and that the classrooms are warm in the morning when they get there. I think like in our homes or even in our cars, you take for granted that all these things are going to work, but in order to make sure that they work, it requires people who spend their time every day making sure that they work. So thanks to you and your team for making that happen.
Questions on Mr. Ridenhour's motion to approve the Comprehensive Maintenance Plan. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? The motion passes six to zero, and the student member concurs. Thank you. Item three under New Business is consideration of the naming process for the West City Elementary School. Mr. Trotta?
We wanted to provide you with an overview of the Board of Education policy and the administrative regulation that govern the naming of a new school facility. Policy FF makes it very clear that the responsibility for naming of a school rests with the Board of Education. In making that determination, the policy provides guidance on the selection of a name. A name may be based upon geographic area. It may be based upon an historic event or place, or a school may be named after an individual who's made a significant contribution to the community, to the state, or to the nation. The policy also indicates that PTAs and citizen advisory committees may be requested to submit recommendations for the Board of Education's consideration. The administrative regulation provides a little further detail on the process with regard to the naming of a new school. It first indicates that the superintendent is to assign a staff member to chair a committee, and this committee is to be composed of two individuals from each of the following organizations. First, the PTA. Second, the student government, and those individuals are selected by the SGA president, teachers, and the citizen advisory committee. It indicates that each member will be from the attendance area the new school will serve. The committee is responsible for soliciting input from community associations and relevant county agencies and organizations. After the committee completes its work, it is to submit three recommendations to the superintendent in priority order. The superintendent is then to forward those recommendations to the members of the Board of Education. We're glad to respond to any questions you might have about the process. That is the current Board of Education policy and regulation that govern the naming process. Thank you.
And just by way of information to the Board, I've asked Mr. Wright to be our administrative liaison to this naming process. That's why he's up here with Tony today, to get your input and thoughts.
I think, so that is what the process is that's laid out in policy. If the Board wants to give any additional direction or provide any other ideas for things that would supplement that process, we would have to do that in a motion of some sort during a meeting. But otherwise, this gives us, I mean, short of that, I think this discussion gives us an opportunity to provide any other direction or input to the committee that they'll be forming based on policy. Is there any discussion?
Mrs. Breitman?
Just to start it off, in reading the policy and your brief summary, Mr. Trotta, it sounds like it's a very broad-based process, and I guess to me, that's the key to this. Our vision is building community, and to be part of that, we need the community to own the school buildings and take responsibility in a philosophical sense. As taxpayers, they own them as well. But from the last time, which was Ruth Ann Monroe, do we have any feedback from that committee of wish we had done this, should have done this, would recommend this on the next process? Do we have anything like that that could inform the discussion?
In my research and the documentation I provided to the Board, there was no information in way of committee responses after the process was over, but it's certainly something I'll look a little bit deeper, work with Ms. Chekovick, to see if there might be some additional information available to help guide us.
Okay.
Are there other questions?
I had one. You said that two of them had to be from the attendance area that the new school will serve. We haven't established an attendance area for the new school yet. I hope that doesn't mean that the process would be held up until such a time as the Board does approve an attendance area, or how do we work with that issue?
What we would do is consult with the superintendent and also with the planning individuals to indicate what do they believe to be the areas that might, students might be drawn from for that particular school. And of course, any notice that we send out is going to be to the entire community, but that would be our primary focus. We certainly can report back to you as to those areas that we believe will be served by the new school, and we would welcome any suggestions if we should broaden that, the group, to include other areas of the community.
And the second question from me is, what would you recommend to a member of the community? Or I've had members of the community approach me with ideas for names for the new school. Should we have them contact Richard's office to, I don't know, if they want to volunteer for the committee, or if they just want to submit suggestions, or what advice would you give for a member of the community who may be watching, who has thoughts on the name of the new school?
Well, I think, and we'll develop some additional guidance as the committee is formed, but I think at this very moment, if anybody wanted to send responses, they could do that through my office or even through Dr. Wilcox's office as well. And I believe that this process, unlike the Ruth Ann, we have many more resources available to us now to get responses from the community. And as Tony was mentioning, although we'll have a committee that will guide this, certainly through email, Facebook, Twitter, there are lots of other ways, and we'll be relying on our local media to help us as well, for folks to have an opportunity to send ideas to us. And, I mean, I can see many forms, many forms of communication people could use to reach out to us, to give us their ideas, all of which would be shared with the committee as well.
Okay, so you're looking for ideas for names as well as volunteers to serve on the committee?
Yes.
Okay. Great.
Mrs. Breitman?
Timeline. Typically, how long does it take for the process to work?
I don't have an exact timeline to share at this moment. I believe the last process unfolded over the course of maybe three or four months, but I'll look over those documents again, and we can establish a timeline that suits the Board and the superintendent's needs. We're definitely, we're definitely ahead of the game right now because we haven't had a groundbreaking at this time. So there is plenty of time, but we want to get started as quickly as possible.
And I'm thinking... And I'm thinking to Dr. Harding's question on the attendance area, maybe the timeline is something we can look at as far as that. I think FEAC is going to be doing a report to us the first of the year, and we might have some preliminary ideas. What is the redistricting? Mr. Trotta, you've said in the past, the end of April to allow time for...
Typically, what we attempt to do is to make sure we have the decision decided by the board well in advance of the upcoming school year. And I'd have to refresh my memory, but it's early in the prior school year, so that families have an opportunity to adjust their schedules if there is a need for them to do so.
We just may want to align those ideas when we develop the timeline. Thank you.
Yes, I certainly think sooner, the sooner we can give the school a name other than West City, I think the happier I'll be, because it's already out there, it's the West City School, and we all know that's not what it's going to be, but the more times you repeat something, the harder it is to... How many times do we still say Central Office when we talk about this building? Because it was years and years and years that that's what the headquarters facility was called. So, I would say, I don't want to rush, because I want to be sure we get it right, but I look forward to giving it a name other than West City. Are there any other comments from board members?
Anybody wish to make any motions regarding any changes or direction to the process other than what policy dictates? All right, if not, then carry forth, and we'll look forward to hearing from the committee.
Thank you.
Thanks very much. Item four under new business is consideration of direction for the calendar advisory committee.
Good afternoon again. This afternoon, I'm here as liaison to the calendar committee, which the board will consider a list of recommended members in a few minutes, requesting if there's any particular directions you'd like to provide the calendar committee in advance of their work. We certainly would be interested in that. I'll carry that information back to the committee, so they'll be starting their work probably within the next week or so, and we look forward to bringing you calendars for the 2015-2016 and 2016-2017 school year.
So, are there any comments from board members? Mrs. Harschman?
I would just like to suggest that prior to setting up any specific dates, that quite a bit of input from those affected be gathered, perhaps by the people on the committee. Maybe they could be sure they have talked to the people they're representing, because I know there are not very many people on the committee itself, but yet they represent a huge amount of people. So, if they could get input before the committee starts, in order to be sure that they have the feelings of the people they're representing, that would certainly help. Thank you.
Are there other comments?
The start time will be on the agenda, I suspect, starting of school. And do we have a definitive verdict from the state?
We don't.
We don't yet.
It's my understanding that that may be taken up in legislation, probably not a decision as far as Labor Day start, or after Labor Day start, maybe as late as first week of April. I guess it could go that late. I would hope, if they did make a change like that, that they would offer school systems the opportunity to continue with the calendars that they already have adopted. Of course, we have no knowledge what will happen with that.
Could I address that, Mr. Bailey, a little bit? And it was going to be part of my discussion as well. The post-Labor Day, they're most definitely, from what I'm understanding, if you can read the tea leaves this far out, will be a piece of legislation. That was the one recommendation that came out of that task force, to study that. And there's a couple of things. I know that MAB is requesting each county to write a letter, giving testimony as to why the building of a calendar should be locally done, that we know our communities, we know our needs, we know all of our testing dates, and we need to be able to keep that, whether it's athletics, instruction. And it seems like it would be helpful, and this may be beyond the general practice of this committee, to have some part in writing that letter, from their experience as a calendar committee, their experience as community. The idea of building this narrative around that this should be a local decision, rather than a one-size-fits-all state decision. And to that also, there is, may very well be need for individuals to come to Annapolis to testify, when those committee hearings come up on this legislation. And again, elected folks like to hear from the people and not always staff, and they want to hear what it's like at a local level and what the experience is, and that, as Mrs. Harschman said, inclusive, that they represent the community. So, I would just suggest that with, hopefully, the support of my colleagues, that maybe that's something the committee could embrace.
Are there other comments?
Speaking for myself, in the last round of the calendar, we made a number, well, the committee and then the board ultimately made a number of changes to the way the calendar had been done, and there are three right off the top of my head that I can think of. One is, rather than having the day off at Thanksgiving on the Monday, moving it back to the Wednesday. I got a lot of very good feedback from particularly parents who have families out of town, that that made their Thanksgiving travel plans a lot easier. So, I know that there's, that leaves us with a two-day school week, which we try to avoid, but from people who try to get out of town for Thanksgiving, I got a whole lot of positive feedback. The second change was the full week of spring break, which I know there was some confusion about this year because of the number of snow days. But the number of people I talked to, staff and families actually, who took advantage of that, I got a lot of good feedback about that as well. I know whether those can be structured that way is going to depend year to year, because Easter moves, but I did get a good bit of positive feedback about that. And the final big change I think we made was changing from eight snow days down to five. So, the only feedback I got on, from folks on that, was perhaps as part of the calendar process, and I think we've done this sort of administratively and with the consultation of the board, but to make it clear in the calendar which days would be taken away as days off if we have more snow days than we've built into the calendar. So, that's some of the feedback that I've received, and I'm sure, certainly, the snow day issue is one that we've all thought about a lot, but those are three that I've heard quite a bit from constituents and staff members about. Any other comments?
Now's our chance to give input. All right? I think that'll be it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, and that brings us to item five under new business, which is consideration of the Board of Education Advisory Committee appointments to the calendar committee.
During closed session today, we discussed the 18 members of the calendar committee, 18 voting members of the county calendar committee, and you had a chance to review their applications, and at this time, I'm requesting the approval of the calendar committee as presented.
Is there a motion to approve staff recommendations for appointment to the calendar committee?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Fisher, second by Mrs. Brightman, to approve the recommendations for the calendar committee. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor? Are there any opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Student member concurs with one abstention.
Thank you.
Item six under new business is consideration of appointments to the Ethics Committee. Mr. Trotta?
Board of Education policy BDF-E5 provides for the establishment of the Board of Education's Ethics Advisory Panel. The panel consists of five members. One of those members must be a licensed attorney, or a paralegal, or a law school professor. The terms of the panel members are staggered, so that there is continuity that's maintained on the committee. There is a need at this time to replace one of the panel members who has resigned, that's the individual who was serving in the position of the attorney position. Another member whose term has expired has indicated that he no longer wishes to serve, and it's also necessary to reappoint an existing member to the panel, to reappoint that individual. At this time, we're requesting the Board of Education's approval of the following recommendations: to appoint Ann Rotz to complete the term of Mr. Poole, that would be a one-year appointment; to appoint Maureen Grove to a four-year term; and to reappoint Don Stevenson to a five-year term. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank Mr. Poole and Mr. Schnebley, who also served on the board, for their assistance and guidance. I'd also like to thank Don Stevenson for his guidance that he's provided while serving on the panel. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Trotta. Is there a motion to approve staff recommendations for appointment to the Ethics Panel?
Mr. President, I move to approve proposed candidates for membership on the Board of Education Ethics Advisory Panel.
Is there a second?
Second. Second, Mr. President.
Motion by Mrs. Brightman, second by Mr. Ridgenhour, to approve staff's recommendations. Is there any discussion?
I just want to publicly thank the individuals, both on the calendar committee and on this committee, who volunteered to serve the board and ultimately the community on these advisory panels, particularly the three individuals here. It represents a great diversity of backgrounds. We have a member of the clergy, we have a director of a nonprofit, and we have an attorney. I think some male, some female. I think there's going to be a perspective of backgrounds, and I appreciate staff's work in finding individuals who bring a variety of perspectives, and thank the individuals for their willingness to serve.
If there are no other comments, the questions on the motion to approve the staff recommendations, all those in favor? Are there any opposed? Motion passes six to zero and the student member concurs. Thank you. Item seven under new business is consideration of the academic hub. Dr. Wilcox?
Thank you, Mr. President. Board members, today we would ask for your favorable consideration of a memorandum of understanding that would allow us, as administrative team members representing the board, to enter into an agreement with Bowman Development Corporation. This non-binding memorandum of understanding would be used to formalize the commitments of all of the parties to work in consultation with each other, to build a downtown academic hub building that would expand our reach into the community and allow kids to come downtown and work in areas that they're passionate about. It would allow us to further implement the concept of boutique learning environments. As we have talked about before from this DAS, Mr. Bowman is the owner of real property located at 13, excuse me, at 13, 15th and 17th South Potomac Street. That is the building that is directly between the current Barbara Ingram facility and the Maryland Theater. What we would like to do is to have deeper discussions with Mr. Bowman about what that facility might look like. We would like to formalize our conversations with the city and with the county about their financial and other participation, and begin to move forward. We're proposing a 30-to-60-day window of time to consummate these discussions with them and move forward. As I've mentioned to you all previously, if we move through this conversation in that timeframe, then we would come back for a public discussion of all of the terms and conditions of this project, and would, at that time, really, I think, lay out a grand vision for a brighter presence downtown for the district. That said, I want to just talk a little bit about the framework that we are currently discussing, and that is that Mr. Bowman and his group would take responsibility for the demolition of the existing property and for the erection of a new building. We would purchase that building and then lease the ground from Mr. Bowman, that the building that we own sits on for some period of time. In order to do that, we would need the participation of the city, both financially and otherwise. And when I speak to otherwise, what I'm talking about there is to make sure that there is adequate parking, safety and security in the area, and perhaps some other considerations. One of the things that we would like to talk to them about is the ground lease that we are preparing to enter into as well. We would need participation from the county on several levels. One, we would need direct contribution of resources that would help us with the initial payment for the facility. And the second thing that we would need would be the county to consider expanding their bonded indebtedness, so that we could enter into a revenue arrangement where if they would borrow the money at a governmental finance rate, we could pay them back. We think this makes a great deal of sense financially. Again, we will talk about all those terms and conditions once we have successfully negotiated them, but that is the framework by which we would like to proceed. Three partners working together to create this facility, us purchasing the facility, and then leasing the ground for a period of time.
Thank you, Dr. Wilcox. Is there a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding with the Bowman Development Group?
Mr. President, I move to accept the superintendent's recommendation to move forward with discussions on the memorandum of understanding for the downtown academic hub.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Ridgenhour, second by Mrs. Brightman, to approve the memorandum of understanding recommended by the superintendent. Is there any discussion?
I'll just make a comment quickly, that I think this is a necessary next step that allows all the partners to finalize funding and design options, and at the same time is non-binding. And I think that's important, but we need to make this statement as a board and allow staff to move forward with those negotiations.
Mrs. Harschman?
You knew I would ask you this. Have they considered parking?
It was part of our initial request of the city and will be part of our continuing request of them, that we have adequate parking for not only our faculty and staff, but perhaps for some number of students and for guests.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Is there any other discussion?
I'm going to be pleased to support the memorandum of understanding. When we met with the county and the city, I think the message we heard from both of them was that they were interested in the project, that they seemed willing to participate, but it was hard for them to make a specific commitment without knowing exactly what the structure of the transaction would be. I think with this memorandum of understanding, we sort of solved that chicken-and-egg problem. You can't know what the financial requirement's going to be until you know what the structure's going to look like, and you can't really know what the structure's going to look like until you know what finances you have to work with. I think with this, we lay down a framework for what the transaction will look like, so that the superintendent and his team can be much more specific in exactly what the finances would need to be in order to make that happen. I think this project continues to fit with our new vision about building communities, building communities of learners in environments that students thrive in. When I was at MAB, the conference last week, Donna and I, with the assistance of Dr. Wilcox, ran a hot-topic discussion about alternative ways of financing schools, and it was, one of the clear takeaways for me was that this school system really is seen as a thought leader in the state regarding how we build facilities and how we utilize facilities to create unique learning experiences for students. I think this continues in that process, and I think it is, looks like it will be very good use of limited funds. I also think the 30-to-60-day window is important, because we've been working on this for a number of months, going on the better part of a year at this point. I think, at least from my perspective, it's time to make the commitment and go, or to decide, no, we can't do this, because staff is putting in a good amount of time. I know the Bowman Group is putting in a lot of time and resources on this project, and there comes a point at which you don't want to invest any more time or resources if there's a chance that the project's not going to go forward. I think we've reached that point, so I think this memorandum gives us the roadmap to move forward and gain the assurances that, yes, this is something that not only we... forward and gain the assurances that, yes, this is something that not only we, but this community will embrace. So I will gladly support the memorandum. Is there any other discussion? If not, the questions on Mr. Ridenhour's motion to approve the memorandum with the Bowman Group. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? Motion passes six to zero, and the student member concurs.
Thank you.
Item number nine under New Business is consideration of the 2015 legislative core values. Did I miss one?
Yeah, the legal opinion.
I'm sorry. Number eight is approval to request a formal legal opinion from the Maryland Attorney General. So back when we discussed Dr. Wilcox's annual evaluation and any pay increase that we might give him, you may recall that the Board made a request of the state superintendent that she approve a new four-year contract that would start on July 1st of 2014 and end on June 30th, 2018. As many of you know, all superintendent contracts in Maryland have to be for four years' duration, and our hope was to be able to establish a new four-year contract starting July 1st of this year. We had done this with Dr. Wilcox for the two previous years as a result of his evaluation that the Board does on his performance every year. To our surprise, the state superintendent came back and said, "I'm sorry, I know I've done it in the past, but I've gotten some new legal advice, and I don't believe that Maryland law allows me to approve this contract." So at the time, we discussed perhaps whether this is something that we wanted to consider legislation for, or some other remedy to allow this Board to do with our superintendent what we both mutually would like to do. I think the next step in that process is to ask the Attorney General of Maryland to give his opinion as to what the law will allow and what the law won't allow. A couple of things could come of that opinion. Number one, he could either say, "Yes, you are allowed to do what you're asking to do. The law does allow it," or he could say, "No, the law does not allow it," and he would then provide us the reasons in the law that we would not be allowed to do it. In that case, then, we could go directly, we would have the information we would need to work with our delegation to try to get the law changed. So to me, this request of an opinion is the next step in our process of our trying to work out the kinds of arrangements that we want to be able to work out with our superintendent. So what I'm going to ask is if there is a motion to authorize, or to request on behalf of the Board, a formal legal opinion from the Attorney General of Maryland regarding the legality of issuing a new four-year contract to a superintendent before the previous four-year contract expires. Is there a motion?
Mr. President? Go for it.
Mr. President, I move to authorize that opinion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Fisher, seconded by Mrs. Brightman. Is there any discussion?
I will just add to your comments.
Absolutely.
Last year, when we developed our core values, legislative core values, and we'll be speaking about those at the next agenda item, the top core value was local authority. And I think this motion and this authorization to seek an opinion from the Attorney General will allow us the flexibility in a very competitive market of superintendents. And we don't compete certainly just in Maryland, but the contiguous states and beyond. And we've had a very big turnover in superintendents in the last few years in Maryland, and I don't think that serves the children and education well. So we need to have this ability or this flexibility. So I'm hoping, again, this is that first step. It may not work, we may need to move on to a different remedy, but it'll give us that information to help us build a case.
Mr. President, I support this recommendation totally, but I'm wondering if, in behalf of some support for this, if there would be any value in contacting other boards who might be concerned about the same issues and obtain their support for the Attorney General's opinion.
I think we could certainly do that. I know we've had some discussions as recently as at the MAB conference with other boards about whether if we want to pursue a legislative remedy for this, whether, there's a couple of ways you could do it. You could try to make it a local bill, which means that it would apply to Washington County.
Right.
Or you could try to make it a statewide bill. And I know I had a number of discussions with colleagues at MAB about whether they would want to sign on to that. So I think there might be a lot of support for that, Mr. Bailey. Is there any other discussion? Mrs. Harsman?
Do we need to contact those other counties as a joint effort then, or are we doing this?
I think the motion on the floor is for us to send a letter. We'd be glad to contact other counties who might be interested to see if they want to participate in the letter, but I think, to me, the more important thing is to get them on board when it's time to go after the legislation.
No, okay.
I would agree.
Because the opinion's going to be the opinion based on what the law is. It's the changing the law that makes it a very political question, so. Any other discussion? If not, the questions on Mrs. Fisher's motion to request the opinion from the Attorney General. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? Motion passes six to zero, and the student member concurs. So with that motion having passed, Mr. Trotto will work to prepare a formal request of the Attorney General, and I will sign it on behalf of the Board. That brings us to item nine under New Business, which is the adoption of the 2015 legislative core values. So in accordance with the new policy BJ, which governs our legislative program, one of the items that the Board needs to adopt is a set of core values, and we do that in a business meeting. The Agenda Planning Committee thought that based on the broad outlines that last year guided the Legislative Response Team, that the same core values basically should guide our thoughts this year. We are planning a work session on October 21st to take specific, more specific positions on legislation and develop specific legislative priorities. We thought if we adopted the core values at this meeting, that that would provide us the framework that we would need at the work session to begin to develop positions on particular issues. So the three legislative core values would be local control, which Mrs. Brightman spoke about just a moment ago, adequate and equitable state funding, and number three is that mandates should be limited and fully funded by the state. Just, again, based on my experience at the MAB conference and at the MAB Legislative Committee that occurred at the conference, this certainly seems to be in line with where MAB's priorities are heading. I think it's in line with where a number of our colleagues from around the state are headed, so I think it makes sense to re-adopt them, but of course, that's going to be up to the Board to make a call. So I'll ask if there's any discussion or if there's a motion to adopt these as core values.
Prior to discussion, when I make the motion, Mr. President, to adopt the following legislative core values for the 2015 legislative session: A, local control; B, adequate and equitable state funding; and C, mandates should be limited and fully funded by the state.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Brightman and seconded by Mr. Ridenhour. Discussion?
Some qualifiers on number two, on the adequate and equitable state funding. I would suggest that we expand on that to include concurrent. The state has an interesting habit of setting up formulas for adequate and equitable, but then it takes a while to find the revenue source to pay for those. So if we use the word concurrent, that may allow us to have that discussion in anapplist during the session, so I would suggest that or give that up for discussion. Also, on number three, when we say limited and fully funded by the state, mandates should be limited, maybe, again, there's an opportunity to put a qualifier that would, the earlier conversation that Dr. Michaels and I had over ADA funding is be sure that the funding is supplemental and doesn't supplant other funding, that it's actually new dollars. So I don't know if those are helpful as we develop our priorities.
Okay, so let me just, is there any discussion on those two recommendations? Okay, so I will ask if there is unanimous consent by the Board to modify the motion to make legislative core value be adequate, concurrent, adequate, and equitable state funding, and to make core value number three, mandates should be limited and fully funded by the state with supplemental funds.
Correct. Thank you.
Is there unanimous consent by the Board to make those changes? So that brings us to the original motion as now modified. Is there any other discussion? If not, the questions on Mrs. Brightman's motion to adopt the three core values for the 2015 legislative session as modified. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? Motion passes six to zero, and the student member concurs. Thank you, everyone. That brings us to the superintendent's report.
Thank you. Mr. President, I'm going to ask the Human Resources Team to come forward here in just a moment, 30 seconds, but I wanted to take the time to mention, for those who might be watching at home, that the Showcase of Bands, which is scheduled tonight, has been postponed. And for those of you watching at home or at school this afternoon, please know that they have rescheduled that event for Tuesday, October 21st. The festival will begin, or the band showcase will begin at 6:00 p.m. The doors will open at 6:00 p.m., and the event will start at 7:00. That's October 21st. And again, once again, tonight's annual Showcase of Band, which is often attended by several thousand folks, has been canceled based on the prediction of poor weather. Finally, I would also say that this Friday, we will be in the Baltimore area, and we'll be at the Teacher of the Year Awards, where our own court leader Laird is one of the seven finalists. We're about to hear from some other teachers who I think one day may actually find themselves in a similar position. So with that, I'm going to ask Ms. Francisco to bring forward her team from Human Resources and her guests.
Thank you, Dr. Wilcox, Dr. Hardings, and members of the Board. I have with me today to present our HR update to you, two of my HR coordinators who are involved extensively in hiring and recruiting of teachers, and also three new teachers, because we thought rather than spend all the time going over data and statistics, that you could hear directly from them about their experiences during the recruitment and hiring process. So those teachers that are with us today, from your far lef, from my far left, excuse me, are Robert Alea, who teaches Spanish at Smithsburg High School, Emily Pinkham, who teaches 5th grade at Morgansville Elementary, and Andrea Zilka, who teaches ELA at Northern Middle. And we'll hear from them in just a moment. So to get started, we always talk about how we get new teachers here with us, and that, of course, is our recruiting process. This year, we had 12 off-site recruiting fairs, staffed by 25 employees, administrators, lead teachers, and other people from CES who volunteered to go out in the field and recruit new teachers. We also had eight onsite screening fairs held here at CES in different categories, elementary, special ed, that allow us to get to know the teachers a little bit better than just their applications on paper. We had over 450 candidates screened during that process. Lindsay can tell you that is a fraction of our actual applicants. That goes up into the thousands when you look at all the applications received for teaching positions. From those job fairs, we received 150 applications and 20 new hires from those job fairs. We hired 127 new teachers this year, so that is a pretty significant proportion from the off-site job fairs. Joni was really instrumental in lining up our recruitment schedule this year, and you will see a little broader array of fairs than you have in previous years. The Maryland Educational Recruitment Consortium is the fair that we attend. It's kind of the kickoff to the recruiting season. It's represented by all the districts in the state. Thousands of people come through, lines at each of the districts to meet the recruiters. And then the others, we tried to look strategically at our current partners in the area, Hood, Frostburg, but also branching out a little bit into some different areas. Also, as you know, we've spoken to you with an eye to diversity, so there are some historically black colleges and universities in that list as well. Our new teacher hires are a little lower than last year, 127 versus 143. That's just based on how many people decided to retire at the end of last year. So that fluctuates based on how many exits we have. New teacher placement, we had the highest number in the elementary schools, 42%, followed by high school and then middle school, and then our other category being Family Center, Antietam Academy, those types of placements. I just got data today, actually, from our new teacher profile. 76% of our new hires student-taught here with us at Washington County, and 36% have substitute-taught here. So we're growing our own in a number of different ways. Our trends in teacher placement are holding pretty steady. The highest number is in elementary. That's where we typically have the highest number of openings, with middle school and high school being pretty close together. And I'm just kind of skimming over these statistics. I want to have the new teachers have some time to talk to you. The experience level of our new teachers, the largest percentage at 50 are brand-new teachers a year or less, followed by some with greater than five at 28%, and 22% with one to five years of experience, so coming in from other districts. The gender of our new teachers, this is pretty typical. We see a lot of, a lot more female teachers at the elementary level, and then it starts to even out at middle and high school, for a total of 11 and 12 male teachers at middle and high. We also conduct annually a new teacher survey, and so of our 127 new hires, 95 responded. I'm sure these three responded, yes. And we've got some very favorable data this year. 92% of our respondents are confident or extremely confident in their choice to come to work here. And we waited a little bit this year. We waited until we were a good month into school before we sent this survey out, so they really had something to base their opinion on at that point. The onboarding processes that we work with employees, new employees, were also rated very favorably, and 97% indicated that they think the support they get from the staff and the administrators at their school will be the key thing in wanting them to keep working here for us in Washington County. Joni worked really hard on the new teacher induction program, which includes our three-day New Teacher Academy. The lead teacher support, these are things that are provided to new teachers throughout the year and all of their non-tenure years. Our new mentor resource teachers that were new to our staff this year. Of course, learning through peer support and observation and visitation, and workshops and trainings. Joni does a lot of TeachScape trainings, lead teacher trainings, mentor resource teacher trainings, to make sure the new teachers feel comfortable. She also does some updates and emails to them, asking them, you know, "What else can we provide for you? What else do you need from us?" So we stay in touch. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to our new teachers. We'll start with Robert, and just, we asked them to give you a minute or two about their experiences coming here to Washington County.
Hello, my name is Robert. I would like to make a little change to the agenda. It says Roberta, not Robert. Although my mother would be ecstatic having four boys, the change would be a bit dramatic for me. I have 13 years' experience teaching in New York City. I had a construction business for quite a bit of time, but my heart was always into the classroom. At the moment, Bloomberg was in office, and there was a hiring freeze for New York City teachers. My brother, who lives in Williamsport, said, "Why don't you try Washington County Public Schools?" And it's like, wow, okay, give up everything and follow my dream. And that's exactly what I did, and I do not regret any bit of it. When I came in here... exactly what I did, and I do not regret any bit of it. When I came in here, I was greeted with so much support and so much, so many tools, so many resources that I can utilize as a teacher, and I felt so welcome, like part of a family. In New York, it took about three years for their mentor to actually tell me, "Hey, I was your mentor, by the way." And over here, on day one, I met my mentor, which is wonderful. I'm at Smithsburg, and the principal, Mr. Chocut, is absolutely wonderful. The inductee program is absolutely outstanding. I feel supported, and while feeling supported and supporting your teachers, the ones that really reap the benefits are the students. And I'm happy to be part of such a proud family of professionals here in Washington County.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Hi, I'm Emily Pinkham. I am actually a product of Washington County. Both my parents are teachers, elementary and one's in middle school now. So I grew up in a family where talking about school was just a part of the everyday dinner table talk. Couldn't really escape it. And, you know, like most children, I was like, I don't think I want to do what my parents do, so I started a different route and went into journalism so I could write. And when I graduated, I started subbing in Washington County, and I loved it. I went to Clear Springs, so I was always with faculty who really cared about me. I love school. It was just a very welcoming place to be, and I want to make that happen for the students in this county. So when I was brought on at Mogginsville, I was so happy and ecstatic, and I've had so much support from New Teacher Academy, from the people in my building, and just all the higher-ups. Plus, I want to know I've had a New Teacher Academy, so I was really excited about that. But I just can't imagine working anywhere else, and I love being here. So, thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Andrew Zilka. I was hired on from one of the job fairs on the Northeastern Ohio Teacher Education Day, as I know it, or the Northeast Ohio Consortium, as it is on the agenda. Going to a job fair takes, it's a very heavy process and it's very intimidating, and commonly, I saw there was 300 employers there. So I saw people lining up in lines and someone on the other side of the table waiting to just take their name down. But when I saw Washington County, it was the opposite. They were out mingling with everybody, talking with everybody, spreading positivity and smiles all around. So I thought to myself, as I was waiting in a line, I want to go talk to those people. I want to go over there. So I did. I introduced myself, and I found out exactly who was part of Washington County and who was just smiles and laughing. And I was, I was at ease. I was comforted by that fact. I went through the process and listened to what Washington County had to say and what you guys are all about, and I was very impressed. So I decided to come here on a tour down to North Carolina and visit Washington County to see what they could offer me, what you have here. I met with Joni, who did a wonderful job taking me through North High School, Northern Middle School, and South High School. She introduced me to some of the lead teachers there, who, in a short conversation with me, was able to see where I was in my educational journey and provide me with the resources to get to the next step, free of charge. Very wonderful. Even to meeting with the English curriculum here at Human Resources, where I was shown the portal and all of the wealth of information they give to their teachers to support them, I saw that it was a very valuable tool in my educational career to promote my educational because I know as a first-year teacher, I'm still learning, and I will still be learning for a long time. So I found that very valuable for me. During the interview process, again, all smiles, all positivity, I was contacted numerous times by the principals and by Human Resources representatives. So it made me feel like, even though they were going through 450 applicants, that I was one of the only ones. So that was very, very special to me. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Andrew. Before we get too much, but I got to acknowledge you are the first man that I've ever met that actually got something for free from Joni.
Ooh.
Every time I see this woman, she's saying, "I need this, I need that, I need that."
They all need iPads. All three of them need iPads.
Oh, there you go.
You just opened the door right up.
Lord, help me.
Quit while you're behind, Dr. Wilcox.
I'm going to stop.
I didn't know if you wanted to ask the new teachers any questions before we continued, so.
Sure, absolutely.
Go ahead, Jackie. I'll jump in. We hear a lot that young folks don't necessarily want to come to a rural school district. They want more of a suburban or urban experience. And I would just ask you, how do you feel about the quality of life? I know you're a native, so maybe, but I'd still like, from your perspective, do you feel like you're always leaving Washington County on weekends, or do you feel there's a quality of life and enough energy and things going on here in this county that it makes your life special here? Would anyone like to tackle that one?
I'll start. I will honestly say, I've noticed that Washington County has really grown since I was in elementary school. There's so much more going on. Downtown's starting to really thrive. So I've seen a great increase in that, but I don't usually go away. On the weekends, I stay here and try to do things that are local. So, not every weekend, but for the most part.
I have left to do the MS Tour on the Eastern Shore. I mean, me being new to Washington County, I have gone in the Jazz Festival downtown, and it seems like it is thriving, and I've heard by a lot of people that it's making a comeback. And I can see that, because the people and the quality of people and the friendliness in the community that I've seen seems to be very welcoming for me, an outsider, which I didn't expect that. I mean, I think it's great and it's a bustling place, and there's plenty to do here. All you have to do is take a look at the people and what events that are coming up next.
Perfect, Andrew.
Coming from, receiving my bachelor's from the Ohio State University in Columbus and my master's from Cleveland State University in Cleveland, Ohio, doing my student teaching there, I'm used to a big-city scene. So coming to Washington County, I was, I feel very at home here. I was able to, just even visiting throughout the process of coming here, going to the gas station, I met members of the community who were all smiles, and I had no idea who they were, but walking back and forth, they said, "Hi, how are you doing today?" And it carried that positivity that I felt throughout Washington County here. So I particularly, I haven't gone home before, two weekends, but one was for a wedding, just family obligations calling me there. For the most part, I like to stay in Washington County and get some of my grading done.
Great. Thank you.
Other questions for the new teachers? Mr. Alea, it's nice to see you again, by the way. I think we met at the New Teacher Picnic.
Yes, ma'am.
Glad to see you two months later and doing great things in the classroom. We hear a lot as board members, and I know it's true, but about how much the art and craft of teaching has changed over the last 10, 15, even two, three years. As somebody who was a teacher for a while and then was out of the classroom for a while, what changes do you see, having been away and now coming back? And not necessarily specific to Washington County, but just with the expectations and what's asked of teachers.
Technology, first and foremost, has changed the landscape of teaching. I've been taught different techniques on how to use Google Documents and have them interact via Google Documents, things, incentives for students to be more interactive with the teacher. There are instances where if you ask throughout the classroom, "Does anyone have any questions?" And no one's brave enough to raise their hand, yet digitally, they're more inclined to ask questions that they wouldn't in front of their peers, afraid, being afraid to be judged. So that opens up an entire gateway on needs assessments for my classrooms, and it creates more of an opportunity of communication between teacher and student, even outside of the classroom. So the learning environment is not just your mod or your period long. It's actually interactive and more of a 24-hour-a-day experience. I remember when I went to college and I was inspired at 2:00 in the morning to write something, now these students can, well, not that I encourage it to parents, but if they feel so inclined to write something or they're passionate about something and want to share via email or any kind of technology, now that that's a possibility as well. So, yeah, the landscape, coming from chalk dust in my hand to an iPad in my hand, thank you very much, everything is a lot more organized, streamlined, and a lot more interactive, and I think it's wonderful and is doing wonderful things here in Washington County and for education as a whole.
Great, thank you. And to Mr. Zilka, I'm from Ohio, too, Cincinnati, but I think you're right. There is a lot of the sort of Midwest politeness and just spirit in the people in Washington County. It's one of the things that attracted me and my family to this community. So I didn't go to the Ohio State University, but I won't hold that against you. Any other comments? Mrs. Fisher?
You all three have been very, very positive. Everything can't be perfect. Is there one thing each of you would change or like to see done, either in the hiring process or in your teaching so far? Whoever wants to start.
Well, one thing that could have made it a little bit more convenient for me in the hiring process is to possibly do an interview through Skype, just because I was notified about a week before my official interview that I would be there, and I was already, I was in charge of a tennis camp over the summer, so I had to make other considerations so that the tennis camp could still go on without me. And I made it a day trip from Cleveland to here and then back, so it was 12 hours driving, round trip. But of course, that would be in a perfect world, and you can't live in a perfect world. I understand that, you know, in order for interviews to take place and for you to really assess the candidate, you need to see them face-to-face, so.
That's a good idea, though. Thank you. Anybody else?
Well, my issue's probably a lot more expensive than his. I student-taught a school where every child had an iPad, and now being in a school where students don't have iPads has been quite a challenge for me, because I was able to see how much more they were engaged. I mean, just the way kids, you know, when they go home, they have computers and devices in their hands, and they're used to that. They're used to the quickness of it. And in the classroom, it really does work. Mogginsville's using the Stride Academy. So I see it with that, even when they're just on the computers, but just having an iPad, I think would be tremendous.
They're coming. We've been approving like 200 a month, so.
Good.
Eventually.
Very happy, because I have so many ideas I want to use with them, so.
So I know why they're struggling to find them, because we, for the second year in a row, we've been voted the best place to work in Washington County.
That's true.
That's true.
Just one comment.
And we, sorry, I cut Mr. Alea.
Yeah.
Sorry. As far as the hiring process, I thought it was, well, pretty much flawless. I have never felt so welcomed there. As far as having my own classroom, I'm a roaming teacher, in a perfect world, in a perfect world, but that's about it.
Understood.
Mr. Bailey?
To demonstrate how things have changed, 59 years ago, 59, I was being released from the military, and I went to a telephone booth on the streets in Colorado Springs, Colorado, and called the Washington County Board of Education about a job. And they put me through, and they said, "Well, we have several openings. Would you like to be on TV?" "No," I didn't want to be on TV. "Well, we have these other openings," and I selected one. I said, "What are the teaching materials?" "One textbook, 300 pages." That was the instruction I received on my beginning teaching. Things have changed.
Any other questions or comments for teachers before we let staff move on? Mrs. Harsman?
I'd just like to say thank you for choosing Washington County, and if you ever need anything, please don't hesitate to ask. You might not get it, but at least ask.
Yeah, I was going to excuse them, since they've been waiting so patiently, and we can do the rest of our report.
Before you do that, you got to ask and receive, so.
Ooh.
I see.
Like you said, always ask.
Oh, my gosh. You're in trouble, Joni.
Thank you.
That's why they say. All attention now on you. Giving them the loose change out of your pocket.
Loose change. Oh.
Thank you.
Thank you for being great.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You just look a little bit like Santa Claus.
Wait a minute.
That's good. Most people say Alfred Hitchcock.
That'll date me.
Okay, so I will continue. We will continue.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Part of, of course, once we've recruited great new teachers, we want to focus on retaining them. And some of the things that are listed here are things that both new teachers and more senior teachers can experience, a lot of professional development, our partnerships with the graduate organizations that we partner with to get advanced degrees for our teachers. We also, of course, in order to hire new teachers, have to have teachers that leave us. Our numbers for last year were holding pretty steady, with 99 total. You'll see the breakdown of resignations, retirements, and non-renewals there. It's a slight difference in the number that are hired and the number that actually leave us, because we have some teachers who transferred to administrative positions during the year. We have teachers that are out on leaves of various sorts, so the numbers don't match up exactly. In terms of exit interviews, teachers are offered immediately a web survey that they can complete. It is confidential, but they're also offered an in-person interview, and I have some data to share with you on that. But of our 99 teachers who left, we had 59 complete the survey, and 10 who requested in-person interviews that Joni conducted. This chart shows you the variation of years of experience of the teachers who left our employ last year. When we look at the exit interview data, by far, the most frequently cited reason for teachers leaving us is retirement. And then second, followed by workload and environment. Salary and benefits and professional development being cited as a reason for leaving are way down at 2% each. So that's encouraging to us, that people aren't leaving to make more money elsewhere, generally speaking, or at least that's not what they're telling us. We also do a teacher retention survey, and that is sent to 300 randomly selected teachers from within the district who have five or more years of experience with us. And so we sent out 300. We got 200 in return. That's about 70%. And what we find from that, just a breakdown of their years of experience, it's pretty evenly distributed, a lot with the five to 10, 36% with the five to 10 years of experience, and another 28 with 11 to 15 years. It's totally voluntary, and we let them know that their individual responses won't be shared. We're just looking for some aggregate data. 80% of those who participated in this survey list salary and benefits as a top reason for continued employment with Washington County, and they also indicate a general satisfaction or they're extremely satisfied with their job, at 75%. We also asked them questions about the quality of support that's provided to them, whether that's from here at CES or within their school, and those ratings are consistently high as well. Joni conducted 10 in-person interviews. There were five exit interviews of retirees, and then you can see the breakdown of the others. It's interesting data, and we can share that in a summary form with you as well. Generally speaking, though, all of her interviews cited the students and the staff as the best part of their job. They enjoy the collaboration. They enjoy the supportive work environment. A lot of retirees simply say, you know, "This is my time. It's time for me to do something different." They're no, they're not leaving for a particular reason other than it's their time to choose to do that. We do ask a question, though, of all of the exit interviews, of what they would like to say, kind of like Mrs. Fisher's question, if you could have something else, what would it be? And some of the things cited, additional Common Core resources, more use of technology, and I know we are using more and more, but I think Emily just gave a good example, changing in their own teaching styles. So there were a variety of things that came up here. I just wanted to touch a little bit on attendance. Lindsay has worked extensively this year, updating our substitute calling system, upgrading and updating our subcalling system. We currently have 463 active substitutes. That number has held steady over the last few years. Our teacher attendance last year was up 10% over the previous school year. And another thing that we're doing to try to improve the consistency of these processes is teachers requesting maternity leave, other leaves of absence, funneling them through one source in Human Resources. So there's a very consistent So there's a very consistent response, and we have one person tracking all of those. Just to give you finally a brief update of the things that we are working on now. Of course, human resources, this has focused mainly on teachers, but we're working with all employees, support staff and administrators as well. We redesigned our website last year, we've updated all of our recruiting materials, we implemented that e-recruiting online application system, upgraded the subsystem, continuous trainings, and not to read this laundry list, but many other initiatives that are either currently ongoing or about to start. Diversity training, some leadership training throughout the district with all employees, not just teaching staff. Any questions that we could answer, we'd be happy to.
Are there any questions on the HR report? Mrs. Fisher?
Going back to page 21, that's the exit interview feedback. I see they talked about additional common core resources. We know from curriculum committee that that's being worked on. Number two, the preparation for particular school environment. I know we used to do Ruby Pain training. Are we still doing that or anything in place of that, that you know of?
No. You defer to Joanie. Yeah, we do not do Ruby Pain training. We do, as part of New Teacher Induction Program, we work with those teachers who are at the, who are working with those at-risk students in order to help them figure out strategies and working with these students. And also, just continual work with the lead teachers, working with the mentors, I think putting the four mentors back into the school system and having that person to discuss, and using Title II funds for professional development in those areas will be helpful.
The last one, additional professional development opportunities. I know when I was teaching, there was an awful lot done during the summer, for teachers from different schools to come together and work on projects. Doesn't seem like we do as much during the summer, that more of it's done during the school year. Has there been any thought given to trying, doing more in the summer again?
I'm going to let you answer that, because I do, I think we actually had a decent amount of training during the summer. We did. The supervisors under Dr. Domain had a lot of trainings in content areas. And then we also still continue to run MSDE classes for Charlotte Danielson, for ELL students, for many different areas, reading classes, things that teachers need to have in order to be certified to teach. We are still running those programs. At the same time, we also try to balance that with, people are very busy. And so we want to kind, especially in this time of change, when teaching is changing, and we've had many different initiatives, we also want to look at letting teachers have some downtime in that summertime. So there's always a balance.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Mrs. Brightman?
I'm always intrigued by the concept of non-traditional teachers, and whether that's, whether you feel that's a good direction. I feel like it's a direction they're discussing at the state level, MSDE, and at many other think tanks and so forth. And what I think I see as non-traditional is sort of the teaching as a second career is maybe one group. The certification process is maybe another. The idea of when you go to colleges to recruit, you're not just looking at education majors, but maybe you're looking at the science and the technology and the engineering majors and the math majors, just for one program. To give a sense of the need for content and relevance of content versus learning how to teach, but having a real good basis in content, do you, how do you, when you talk to your other HR colleagues across the state and country, do you see that bubbling up anywhere else?
This is Lindsay's area of expertise, so I'm going to let her address this. But I think my initial comment would be, much as we would like to do that, in many instances, the state doesn't make it easy for us because of certification requirements.
We are required to have all of our teachers be highly qualified to the best extent possible. And because of that requirement for highly qualified, that means that they're eligible for a regular teacher certification. So if you're looking for someone that's a non-traditional in the sense that they didn't complete a teacher education program, if we, maybe they had a math major, if we were to hire that person, then they would be required to earn their credits in education, to get their teaching certification. And while they're going through that process, they're considered not highly qualified. So the law requires us to hire highly qualified teachers, and we can go for non-highly qualified if we can prove that we've exhausted our measures to hire the highly qualified teachers first. Another thing, to answer your question about the majors, one thing to keep in mind is generally, at the secondary level, a teacher almost has the major in that content when they become a teacher. For example, I graduated from Shepherd, I was two math classes away from having a double major in math and secondary education. So the content that's required for the secondary teachers is equivalent to a major in that subject area. Generally, those, your secondary education majors, those teachers don't have a minor because they are completing those kind of dual requirements. So sometimes when we look at the degree that the college confers, some colleges confer a degree in math, and then they have the education certification along with it, whereas a college like Shepherd confers a degree in secondary education, but they have all of those requirements to almost meet that double major, or in some cases, they have met that double major for their content.
And thank you for that answer. I guess my first reaction is, I always push back when I see institutional barriers in the way of doing good work for the, doing the right thing for the right reason. And I think as a board of elected officials, it's sort of our job to think critically of trying to break down certain barriers. If you had a choice as an HR and you didn't have MSDE doing the can't-dos, would you see the system being rewarded, or would it be a good thing to have some non-traditional, some more content base, some second? I think of people who maybe work at Goddard or Norfolk Grumman, wherever, and they decide they want to retire early, and they'd like to give back to their community by teaching. And they would have a tremendous content knowledge and be very relevant to what some of our students would really like to think of as a career path. How would you think we could break down those barriers? How could we advocate, and would you think that's a good direction to go in?
I can't speak for the other two. I do, I think that we occasionally miss out on a good candidate because they don't have the right transcript or the right number of credits or degree. I can think of actually a paraprofessional on staff now who would probably have 37 teaching job offers, would it not be for the fact that he does not hold a teaching certificate? We're actually working with that person right now to help that happen. But I do think there are some opportunities there. I just think, you know, when I listen to, I was at the state certification meeting last week, Lindsay and I were there, and it's more and more regulation, not less and less in terms of the week.
You see it going in the other direction.
Yes, I do, don't you?
See, I thought Dr. Lowry was talking about this non-traditional at MAB a little bit at that.
All right, the teachers want to get at you here, Donna.
Okay, I figured they might.
I'd like to respond a little bit to that.
Mrs. First Fisher, and then we'll come over to Mrs. Harsman.
I know occasionally you do find someone who, you say, was a math major, a science major, whatever, and does have the other qualities that you need in order to successfully teach. But I think that's kind of the rarity. I've known an awful lot of people that I graduated with who even took the teacher courses and the second major, but couldn't teach. They were brilliant in their field, they knew everything there was to know about English or everything there was to know about history, but they just couldn't teach it. So why I think, okay, there are, there should perhaps be, you know, a situation where you can hire somebody if you're convinced they can teach and they're really an expert. But in my experience, I've found that that's not usually the way it works.
Mrs. Harsman?
I think that's where college comes in, because they do not require the same teaching classes in order to teach college, because by the time the students reach college, they can understand some of the talk that goes with a particular class or a particular element. But for high school and below, there, as Jackie said, there are so many people who are very well-versed on whatever the curriculum might be, or would be able to know everything that's in that particular class, but couldn't teach at all. Because teaching is a whole lot more than knowing the subject matter, a whole lot more. So I would be surprised if anything ever came down that you could go into a classroom without a teaching degree. And I'd be unpleasantly surprised if that happened.
Mr. Reiden?
You know, I can see it both ways, to be truthful with you. And I think it all boils down to the individual. And sometimes you don't know until that person walks in a classroom and sees if that person can connect with kids and transfer their vast array of knowledge to those students in a manner in which those students are going to pick it up and benefit from it. You know, you've seen, I mean, there are people that have tremendous credentials coming out of college with a teaching certificate that can't do that. There are people that come into a classroom from other areas that can. And I think, you know, in some ways, it would be nice if you had that opportunity. But one of my concerns is different than Jackie's and Mrs. Harsman. My concern is that systems, not necessarily Maryland, but systems will find that as a way to, you know, to bypass or cut their budgets or just find somebody to put in a classroom. So, you know, there are so many ways to look at this, and I think it would be lovely to have a little more flexibility for our people. But I think, you know, you have to be very careful. And you really have to be diligent if you put a person into a classroom that hasn't had the training in methodology and learning, and learning trends and traits, and a person that is brilliant in their subject matter, sometimes cannot understand how the student in that classroom isn't brilliant also. It's so easy for me, why isn't it easier for you? And I think a lot of times, that's frustrating for children, and frustrating for the individual that's trying to do the job. So it's a, you know, it's a double-edged sword.
Mrs. Fisher?
I was going to say this before when I was speaking, I hesitated to say it, but I'm going to say it now. I think a teacher is born. I don't think a teacher is made. So that's the difference.
I would add to that. I think great teachers are, it's just something they have. There's something about them, you know, they connect. You can walk in a classroom and know somebody's a great teacher. You know, any of us can. You know, everybody around this table, everybody in the audience, can walk in a classroom, and you will know within 10 minutes if that person's a great teacher. You know? But you can take a person that's an average teacher and make them better. I think, personally.
I do. So. I think this is not a discussion that only we are having. At the MAB conference last week, I went to a session with the state superintendent. It was two hours of just back and forth, and a good 15, 20 minutes of that discussion was spent on just this topic. Because many systems are struggling to find teachers in specified areas. And they have had people from Goddard or from, you know, come and say, "You know what? I'm 55 years old, I'm tired of being in a research lab, I'd like to spend 15 years teaching." And so that conversation evolved into exactly the discussion we're having here. It also evolved into a question of, is there a way to pay that prospective teacher for their experience? So a lot of creative ideas about trying to fill those gaps. So it certainly is not a discussion just we're having clearly MAB last week, there were a lot of other counties having that discussion, and the state superintendent trying to work out what the certification requirements should be. One of the other things she spent a lot of time talking about with us was rethinking what schools of education are like, whether four years is enough. Do you want to go to five years and add the extra cost? Do you want to have a year that sort of works like an internship, sort of way, the way a physician does, another profession? And I think these were all brainstorming ideas that she's having with some of the state educational institutions. But clearly, these discussions are ongoing as other school districts deal with the same kind of challenges we do. So it was a great discussion last week that I was glad to listen to and have her be a part of.
And, well, I don't want to prolong the discussion. I do want to say that I think every teacher, whether they are born to being a teacher or they're simply recognized as a great teacher, can be made a better teacher through thoughtful professional development. I've had the great privilege of working with a number of different programs in the country. First, in Baton Rouge, Louisiana, we were probably the second-largest consumer of Teach for America graduates outside of New York City. For many of you who know what Teach for America is, it is a program where the best and brightest from Ivy League schools and some of the top-tier universities around the country determine that they want to give back to the communities it gave to them in many cases, and they become teachers. Now, they go through a very intensive seven-week boot camp to prepare them. And there's a lot of criticism about the program, but I will tell you, in Baton Rouge, they turned our culture around when we were hiring 50 and 70 Teach for America graduates a year during my tenure there. It was an important complement to our traditional education, College of Education graduates. They brought deep content knowledge, they brought a passion, they brought a connection to kids that was valuable. Could you run a school system with those folks? No. But they were an important shot in the arm. Secondly, we turned to another program, and it was Troops to Teachers. And as we had veterans coming back from different campaigns, we allowed them to come into our classrooms based on their college preparation and degree. And quite honestly, some of the best young leaders that we had in our schools were those young people who'd come back from defending our country, who had been through a rigorous program of academic preparation. So I think there are many ways to get teachers into classrooms. To Lindsay's point, I think in Maryland, given where we are today, it's becoming more difficult to get non-traditional teachers into classrooms. But that doesn't mean we should shy away from looking at opportunities to get great people in front of our kids. The other thing I would share is, I think what Lindsay said is absolutely accurate at the secondary level, where many of our people have deep content expertise. But one place where I think we have to look at deepening our content expertise is at our elementary schools. Because oftentimes, the teachers who are teaching mathematics or English Language Arts there don't have the benefit of those majors, where they have the preparation that Mrs. Harsman or Mrs. Fisher or Mr. Reidenauer or Mr. Bailey had, in terms of their academic preparation. So I think we have to continue to look at this and struggle with this a little bit. You know, generally, I think we're well-served by the certification laws of Maryland, but I always think that we have to push back a little bit, to your admonition, Mrs. Brightman, and say, you know, where can we get the best and brightest people to be in front of our kids? And if it's from the College of Education, so be it. But if we can't get the people we need there, I think we have to look outside the traditional mains, and then find a way to support those people so that they're successful. And with that, I'm going to say, excuse me, I'm going to take a little trip down the road, and I'm going to leave you to your own design here, so I don't want me to leave you, but I'm leaving you.
So how much trouble can we get in?
As much as you would like. I see you have some folks here who want to get in trouble with you. Anytime I see Al in the audience, I know, I should probably leave.
Any other questions for the HR team?
Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Great discussion.
And I think I'm.
You're up next, which is personnel action.
Okay. Yes, you can. Thank you.[1799.83]
Thank you. Dr. Harding, members of the board, as discussed in closed session earlier today, there are several personnel actions for your consideration and approval.
Is there a motion?
Mr. President, I move to accept recommendations of staff on personnel action.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Brightman, second by Mrs. Fisher to approve the personnel actions recommended by staff. Is there any discussion? If not, all does in favor? Are there any opposed? Motion passes six to zero and the student member abstains.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have reports to the board. First is the findings of the 2014 annual audit.
Good afternoon, Mr. President, members of the board. It's my pleasure to welcome Mr. Mike Manspiker, who will present the results of the 2014 audit. Mr. Manspiker, as you know, is a member of the firm, Smith Elliott Kearns &amp; Company of Hagerstown, Maryland, CPA firm. Also with me this afternoon is Mr. Al Martin. Al is a member of the board's audit committee. And also, we have Mr. David Brandenburg, our Director of Accounting. First of all, I want to say that the finance staff sincerely appreciated working with Smith Elliott again this year. As always, they were extremely professional and easy to work with throughout the entire audit process, and we certainly did appreciate that. Also, I would be remiss if I didn't thank the members of the audit committee for their service. These gentlemen are all accounting and financial professionals who carve time out of their busy schedules each year at this time to provide direction to our audit, review its results, and offer suggestions when they believe that it's necessary. This group is chaired by Mr. Jeff Yingling, who for many years had a solo accounting practice here in Washington County. The other members of the committee are Mr. Martin, who I just introduced. Al is the former, as you know, is a former CFO for the city of Hagerstown. Also, Mr. Ray Gray, the former CFO of Meritas Health and now the President of Tri-Virgin Health. And Mr. Ron Schiffler, who for many years had a solo accounting practice here in Hagerstown area. I'd also like to express my appreciation to Mr. Brandenburg and to his two accountants, Mrs. Kajowski and Mrs. Milburn, for the hard work that they do, not only during the audit time, but throughout the year. The clean audit opinions that the board receives every year are a testimony to their hard work that they do on a daily basis. That brings me to the audited financial statements. Governmental financial statements are complicated documents and significantly different from what we all see in Accounting 101. Therefore, I would recommend that any interested individual focus first on the portion of the audited statements called the Management Discussion and Analysis, or as we refer to it, the MDNA. This section can be found on pages four through 15 of the audit document, and it provides details on the various statements and how they interrelate. In addition to providing basic understanding of how the governmental financial statements are reported, the MDNA also provides a discussion of the fiscal 2014 results. In accordance with the governmental auditing standards, however, the MDNA is not audited. However, senior accounting staff built this discussion upon audited financial statements, and therefore, you can rely on the data that's presented there to be in accordance with the audited material. All that being said, at this time, I'm going to turn the discussion over to Mr. Manspiker, who will provide you with the independent auditor's report. And following Mr. Manspiker's presentation, Mr. Martin will provide you with the audit committee's reaction to the audit. Finally, Mr. Brandenburg will give you an overview of the results of 2014 operations. Gentlemen?
I guess I'm up first. And I'm just going to talk to the audit opinions and the audit process. Of course, the subject of the audit is the financial statements, which Mr. Brandenburg will cover last in the presentation. But just behind the table of contents is what's called the Independent Auditor's Report. There are various headings on those paragraphs, and I thought I would use that as a framework for discussing just what an audit is of financial statements. First of all, the, there's a paragraph there called Management's Responsibility for the Financial Statements. And that paragraph clearly states that it is management who is responsible for the preparation and presentation of these financial statements. It is their representation of the financial transactions, which they have been accounting for throughout your fiscal year, which ended June 30th. It then goes on to talk about the auditor's responsibility and the process that we go through in order to offer an opinion on the fairness of the presentation of those financial It involves over 450 man-hours worth of work to issue this opinion. And we start with a pretty extensive review of information, both internal and external information, and prepare a risk assessment of where the risks are within this accounting system and within the presentation. And then we design our audit procedures. So ultimately, our conclusion then is that our audit procedures, number one, are adequate and, number two, they resulted in audit evidence, which allows us to give the opinion that these financial statements, in fact, are fairly presented in accordance with the appropriate accounting principles. We also reference the supplementary information, including the Management Discussion Analysis that Mr. South talked about. And as he indicated, they are not audited, but we do review those for consistency with the audited financial information. And then finally, we talk about some additional auditing standards under which we have to perform procedures. And they are required because of the fact that you receive a substantial amount of federal grant dollars. So there are two federal documents, government auditing standards, which we must follow, as well as the Single Audit Act or OMB Circular A133, which requires us to do specific testing related to your federal grants. In both instances, we have to perform both tests of internal control and tests of compliance. And the results of our testing under the government auditing standards did not indicate any findings to report to you today. So that is a very excellent representation, not only of your finance staff, but really all departments within the administration of the school board. Because, you know, the Personnel Department, the HR Department, they touch a lot of those internal controls and policies that are being tested, certainly grants administration. And so there's a lot of different aspects of the school board's operations that are being tested in this portion of the audit. And then finally, there are also, there's a schedule in the back of the financial statements of the federal grants. And your total federal grants expended during the fiscal year were almost $21,400,000. We have to go through a very unique process, which I won't even attempt to describe to you, in order to select a sample of the grants we have to test. But because of the type of grants you have and the array of grants, we actually had to test almost 94% of those grants for compliance testing. And the standard is, you know, once we go through that whole risk assessment process and identify the particular grants that have to be tested, then we have to do an overall look. And if we don't have 25% coverage, then we have to select some more. The first pass-through, we ended up with 94% required to be tested. So you had very extensive coverage and a clean record in terms of compliance. So there were no findings to report. So all in all, the audit went very well from our perspective. There were no concerns or issues that we, as the auditors, brought to the audit committee or to the elected board. So with that, I'm going to turn it back over and I'll be happy to answer any questions or whatever after the rest of the presentation.
On behalf of the audit committee, I just wanted to thank both the staff and Smith Elliott. The audit process went very smoothly. As a committee, we met with the auditors and staff in a pre-audit planning meeting before the start of the audit, discussed any issues or concerns that we felt should be considered. And I think the whole process went very smoothly. If you turn to the last page of the report, page 64, I like checklist and as Mike alluded to from Smith Elliott, this is a great score sheet, if you want to call it, on how the board and its staff did this fiscal year. And you have a clean audit opinion, an unqualified opinion. There were no internal controls over financial reporting, material weaknesses or significant deficiencies, no non-compliance issues regarding your federal grants that were reviewed. And the other key thing here is that there really were no management suggestions. So I think that speaks very highly of your staff and I think just to express compliments to the staff and quality of people that you have working for the board. A lot of times, people don't think of education as being a big business, but it's a big, important business. And your annual budget, your revenues are over $300 million a year, and your asset base in excess of that. People might look at, and I don't want to steal Dave's thunder in going through too many of the statistics, but I think it's impressive to say that as a body, you've been making good investments in our community's future, and the audit committee recognizes that. The fact that new construction or rehabilitative expenditures that qualify as asset additions total $24 million, $25 million, and depreciation on the existing asset base is about 10, shows that you're making the right kind of investments and investing in our community and our children's future. If that number were much reversed or much closer, we'd have a problem. But I think it's a good statement to the community that we are making investments, and I think that speaks well to all of you as a body and to our county's willingness to make those investments. I would like to reserve a comment or two maybe after Dave makes his presentation, but so I don't steal his thunder, I'll turn it over to Dave.
Okay, well, thank you very much. As they mentioned, we did have a very good year, very positive results. As Mr. South mentioned, Management's Discussion and Analysis gives an overview of that. And I just wanted to call your attention to page nine at the top of the page. Local funding amounted to 32.4% of our revenues this year. That's higher than last year, and that's primarily due to the increase required by the local contribution to the pension expense. And also, this year, we recorded the donation of the land for the West City Elementary School. And under the standards that govern the preparation of these financial statements, we record things that not only go through our books, but on what others do on behalf of us. So we record the state's contribution to the pension system as pension expense and an offsetting revenue. We record the donation of the land from the county for their school as well. The federal revenue is about a little bit under 7%. I've seen that not change much in the years that I've been here, it's pretty flat. Fixed charges down that schedule there on page nine, that's the area of our income statement that grew the most, and it's up $12.5 million. About $9 million of that is due to the increased pension and the other post-employment benefits adjustments that we had to make. That continues to increase much faster than any other part of the budget. And the rest of it is due just to normal employee benefits, even though we only had a 1% increase in our health insurance rate last year. If you go to page 12, that page begins the analysis of the school system's funds, and we might be a little bit more used to talking about our different funds individually. And you can see there the disclosure about the money that was transferred from the fund, from the current expense fund to pay for this facility, the renovation of this facility, as well as money that we transferred to contribute toward the funding of Bestor Elementary Schools replacements. Pages 16 through 17 then begin the, what we call the government-wide financial statements. You have the Statement of Net Position, and in the highlights, you see that we are increased in our position there about 3.6% over last year, so it's very positive results there. And then on page 17, this includes all aspects of our organization except fiduciary funds. It includes the capital projects, it includes the food services under business-type activities. And you can see, we had about an $8.7 million increase in net assets measured under this basis. This includes the depreciation, it includes the capital leases, the compensated absences, and things that we don't normally talk about in our operating budget. Okay? Then pages 18 through 27 are our individual fund financial statements. And you can see a breakdown there of the individual fund results, the assets and liabilities, and then a reconciliation page on page 19 that reconciles that to the government-wide statements in the beginning. Page 20 shows the Statement of Revenues and Expenditures for the governmental funds, that being our general unrestricted operating fund and the grants, the restricted fund for the grants, as well as the capital projects fund. And then a reconciliation follows that to the page 17. And then we have the statements, both of net position and changes in that position for our food services and internal service funds on the pages following that. You can see on page 23, we had about a $1.5 million surplus on the self-insurance fund, and that is due to our claims not increasing to the extent that we thought they would. And we've had very favorable experience there for a number of years, and as you know, we are making an adjustment for that this year. So next year, that will probably show a loss, but it's a planned loss. And then 28, pages 28 through 46 are the notes to the financial statements. That provides an overview, first of all, of our different funds and the basis of accounting of the statements and so forth, and then some of our core accounting policies that govern the preparation of these financial statements. And then you get into details of our cash and investments and receivables, payables, capital assets and so forth, of our long-term liabilities, the capital lease that we have on the Barbara Ingram School, and our compensated absences, and our copier leases and so forth. And so that's just, that's a good, if you want to get into more details about any particular thing, that's a good place to look for a better, more thorough explanation of those items. Page 47 is a statement that we are probably most familiar with. This is our unrestricted operating budget, operating current expense fund presented on the budgetary basis. And this is what we spend a lot of time talking about, particularly in the winter and early spring months. And it shows a $4.7 million excess of revenues over expenditures. And the variances from the budget there on a category-by-category basis, these categories are specified in Maryland law, and this is the categories that we report to you under the different expenditures. Page 52, let me get to that, that is a budgetary basis that also includes our restricted grants. And you can see about $17.3 million spent there. The difference between that and the $21 million that Mike was talking about under our federal expenditures is primarily the food services. As you know, we get lots of money, reimbursement for our meals, for free and reduced meals. And then pages 54 through 64 is the single audit, and it lists the, it has the opinions that Mr. Manspiker talked about, and it also... that Mr. Manspiker talked about, and it also lays out all of our various federal grants and some notes about those, and a reconciliation to spending under our fund, too. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer those, or if there's any particular thing that you want to get into in more detail, I'd be happy to do that at this time or at a later time, whatever your choice is.
If I can, if there's no questions, if I can just add one thing. One of the things that, in the audit or communications to the audit committee and to the board, one of the things we identify is the more significant accounting estimates and the more critical accounting disclosures. And not to dismiss some of the very big numbers in this financial statement, but if, for instance, you receive $150 million in revenues and you pay out a $150 million in salaries, it's a big number, but it's pretty straightforward. There's not a lot of latitude in terms of accounting, there's no judgment there. But there are a couple of areas in your financial operations where there is a fair amount of accounting, what we call accounting estimates, and some latitude. And if I direct your attention to page 41, these next couple pages would be what I would consider to be the more critical part of these financial statements. You start there under risk management, and particularly, one of the largest areas of risk management is that note 10 concludes on page 42, is your self-insurance fund for employee and retiree health insurance. David mentioned earlier that you have about a $9 million surplus in that particular fund, and that's a very healthy position. You can see there are claims paid there of about $36 million for the year. So it's a, it's a very significant number, and it's not a number that your finance staff can easily predict, because this is, you know, you're trying to set rates and budgets, and these are health insurance claims that are coming in, and you have retained risk in that area. Note 11, the pension plans, of course, you're primarily participating in the state pension And, you know, you're a, just a small piece of that large retirement system. But on page 43, under funding policy, you know, the very last sentence there indicates that, as of the most recent information from the state retirement system, the plan is funded at about 65%. And that is the actuarial liability, not the ultimate liability. So that's just, that's 65% of what the actuaries say should be there. And then, as you move on, page 44, you hit another major area, post-employment, healthcare, and life insurance. And as that note moves on to page 45, you can see that your actuaries there in the middle of page 45 have estimated a liability of $185 million, and your funding is about $37 million. Now, that's, that's a huge shortfall, but I have to give you a lot of credit in this area, because the fact of the matter is that there was not a lot of attention focused on this area, and the accounting standards, unfortunately, until fairly recently, did not require a lot of this disclosure. So most school systems or state governments or local governments had not funded that at all. And you have made phenomenal progress towards that funding. I would venture to say that you're way ahead of most of your peer organizations in that regard. But nevertheless, it's important to understand, there's still a rather huge gap there.
These costs prior to this change in the accounting rules have been funded or accounted for on a pay-as-you-go basis. And so it's basically that change in the accounting methodology to recognizing present value, future cost, and what's been accumulated towards providing for those that created the liabilities. And as you can see there on page 45, the system, as Mike said, you've made great progress in funding that liability.
In any regard, those are the areas where there's a lot more of an estimate, latitude, projections of cost and things like that that impact the numbers. So that's why we would consider those to be the more critical disclosures.
And finally, I'd just like to mention that, again, these government financial statements, the board is a big entity, but they are complicated. So if you're trying to encourage someone to find out about how you're doing, again, that management discussion and analysis is probably one of the best places to look. And pages eight and nine are a good snapshot of where you stand, which basically is your assets less your liabilities, your net position improved, as you can see, from 238.4 million to 247.1 million. And most of that is a net investment in capital assets. Your unrestricted assets went down a little bit, and part of that is because you invested some of your fund balance in new assets like this facility here. But you're still showing, I think, $24.2 million of unrestricted net assets versus $29.7, so you're still in very good shape. And you had a net increase in your overall financial position on page nine of $8.7 million, which basically helped to largely offset some of those investments that you made. So that's why your bottom line net position did improve. And I think that's something, as people ask you questions about how the board's doing, I think you can allude to that. The other thing, though, is that that $24.2 million, while it sounds like a lot of money in fund balance, really isn't when you look at the size of your budget. You don't even have a month's worth of operating reserves, so you're operating very lean. And I think no one can say that you're stockpiling resources or not fully investing what you've been given back into the community.
Is there any questions or discussion from members of the board?
I've got a couple.
Mrs. Brightman?
Just a point of, I guess, personal privilege. The first time I ran into Al Martin was back in the mid-'90s at a budget and advisory committee where you were the chair. Wayne Gerson was the superintendent, B. Marie Byers was the president of the board. And I say that just to say thank you to you. You have given back to education in this county for a long, long time, and here you are again today, telling us that we're doing a good job, but I appreciate your willingness to help us come to that conclusion.
Thank you.
And I know, Mike, you served on the budget advisory committee for many, many moons, and appreciate your support as well. One question, we've had two legislative audits in this system so far. I believe they're scheduled every six years. When we do these audits, independent audits, do we take a look, do you take a look at those legislative audits, and do they inform your work?
Yes, absolutely. The legislative audits are much more extensive in terms of procedures. They're worried about procedural controls and operations and things like that, where we're more focused on the accuracy of the financial statements. But clearly, they do go work into our risk assessment process.
Do they flag some areas you may?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Those legislative audits are also discussed with the audit committee as well.
Oh, good. Thank you.
Are there other comments or questions?
I want to thank all parties involved as well, Smith Elliott Kearns, for another year of what I keep hearing is a very good, smooth, productive process with a good working relationship between our team and your team. That's great. And of course, Mr. Martin and all the members of the audit committee who are very well-educated, experienced, professional individuals who give of their time, as Donna said, to the school system. And finally, I'll just, well, two things to the staff who we rely on to implement the budget that the board passes for, once again, having demonstrated to the auditors, and I hope to the public again, that they do what they say that they're going to do. And that should give all taxpaying members of the public and all people who are concerned about education, it should make them pleased that their school system is run in such a professional, business-like way. And I'll finish just by saying what I think I always say at this meeting, which is, the audit doesn't say anything about the wisdom of the decisions that the seven of us make. But it does say that where we all say the money should be spent is where it is actually spent. And to me, that is the closing the loop on the feedback mechanism for the public. The public elects us, we are entrusted with their money in order to do a job in the schools. We make decisions about where those dollars will be spent, because we don't spend a dollar in Washington County Public Schools without this board having a say in it first. And it's when you come back and say, yes, where you said the money was spent is actually where the money was spent, is where the public gets its assurance that what we say is what we're doing. To me, that's as important a piece of transparency as there is in anything else that we do. They can disagree with how we choose to spend the money, and that's, I guess, what elections are about.
Sure they do.
But nobody can say that we're not spending it where we say that we're spending it. So thank you all for being that part of the overall governance process. I think that's a great service, not only to the board, but to the community that we all serve. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is board member committee reports. Mr. Coleman? Student government?
Student government will have its GA for this month, next Tuesday at North High, 9:00.
Great, thank you. Mrs. Harschman, curriculum and instruction?
Curriculum and instruction met September 23rd with Dr. Domain and her staff. We went over some new instructional programs, and I hope that those will be coming to the whole board very soon. Our next meeting will be October 28th, 11:15, in the board conference room, and everyone is invited.
Thank you. Mrs. Fisher, policy review and development?
Policy committee met September 23rd also. We reviewed 19 facilities' policies, regulations, and exhibits, most of which had been recommended for rescission by the facility committee. Most of those will be coming before the board for rescission. However, we sent a few back for reconsideration and some elaboration. They should be on our next business meeting. We also discussed policy IHBH and made a few small changes. It is entitled "Public Charter Schools." Last year, I was part of a special committee, which not only significantly updated the policy, but also rewrote the 175-page application. This policy will be coming before the full board in the near future, hopefully at the first meeting, I think, in November. Our next meeting is this Thursday, October 9th, at 8:30 in the board conference room, and then we will meet again on October 28th at our regular time of 1:45.
Thank you. Mr. Bailey, facilities?
Nothing to update since we reported last on our last meeting. We'll meet again October the 28th at 8:45, possibly at 701 Frederick Street, but that's not confirmed yet.
Mr. Reidenhour?
The HR committee will meet October 28th at 10:30 in the board conference room.
Thank you. Mrs. Brightman, anything from MAB?
No committee meetings other than the conference, which I'll talk about under the comment period.
Okay. Mrs. Harschman, anything from conference planning or any other committees?
Just that everything went well, which ought to have some comments for, under the comments section.
Yeah, we should all take, one of the things that, before we get to all that, one of the things that occurred at the committee, at the MAB conference during the business meeting is Mrs. Brightman was installed, elected, and sworn in as the treasurer of MAB. So
I'd forgotten.
We have even more representation on MAB than we did before, and I know that she will have them in very capable hands. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Any other committees that would like to report? Okay, that brings us to future agenda items. We have, we are hoping to reschedule the joint meeting for October the 21st, but I think I just got an email that says that the commissioners can't make that date, so I'm not sure when we will be able to reschedule the joint meeting. We've scheduled the groundbreaking for the soon-to-be officially-named West City Elementary School. That will be on November 18th at 1:00. We will have a, sort of an extended report on December 9th on the Middle College. Dr. Hanlon, who is working with the Middle College program, and Dr. Altiri both wanted to come and give a presentation, and we thought that it would be worth, especially with a brand-new board, having a little longer discussion about that and, you know, what the implications are moving forward for our instructional programs and for work at the campus. Finally, we are going to schedule a work session on redistricting sometime in January.
Dr. Harding?
Yes.
The way you said that about West City made it sound like West City is now the official name.
Okay, well, I didn't certainly, I certainly didn't mean to imply that.
I'm afraid some people might have mistaken it for that.
Well
I missed that one.
We will, we will break ground on the school on the west side of Hagerstown on the 18th. Thank you for that. I think that brings us to board member comments. Mr. McCos?
No comments.
Mrs. Fish, Mrs. Harschman, it's been a long meeting. Mrs. Harschman?
Yes, I'd just like to comment on the MAB conference. It was, gave us an opportunity to learn and share with board members from all over the state. I consider myself very lucky to have been able to attend that, and I also received a Leadership Two Award during that time. And I think that anytime we can get professional development, as Dr. Wilcox said, for teachers, it's also very important for Board of Education members. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Fisher?
I have nothing tonight.
Mr. Bailey?
Nothing to add.
Mr. Reidenhour?
Nothing.
Mrs. Brightman?
Background briefly, also attended the MAB conference, and I guess my major takeaway from that was the legislative core values that we discussed earlier, the work session we're going to be bringing forward for our legislative platform and priorities. As legislative chair in that capacity of MAB as well, we've been trying to get information out to other boards throughout the state of ways that they can develop their own core values and their own legislative priorities. So my, I think what I feel like I accomplished was to encourage Prince George's County, I think will be making a presentation to their board, Calvert County will be making a presentation to their board, and about two weeks ago, we made a presentation in Frederick County. And I would be remiss if I did not thank Mr. Trotta and the paralegal Jamie Brown for all the tremendous support they gave to me and Dr. Harding's and certainly Dr. Wilcox on putting together the information, the research, the notebooks. I think Jamie spent some weekend hours here in this building putting it together. So we are a team here. We work together and support each other, and that was huge. On Friday, the last day of the conference, Dr. Harding's led a discussion of the alternative financing for public schools, construction, and non-traditional facilities, that, again, we spoke about earlier today with the memorandum of understanding, the academic hub, and how those additional academic classrooms are going to support what we're seeing as boutique or specialized programs through or specialized programs throughout the county, something that our students and their families and our business community have supported. And I think we're heading in a great direction. So the MAB conference, I thought, was well-attended. Dr. Wilcox was there. Mr. Trotter was there for a while. I know Mrs. Williams was there. So as always, you come away with a lot of food for thought. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Brightman. I, too, just a couple of additional words about the MAB conference. I attended the legislative committee meeting, which was one of the events during the conference. A great discussion with people from around the state about their legislative priorities, a lot of the same kinds of concerns that we have. Again, we were recognized as leaders in the state for the way that we've gone about developing our legislative programs and engaging. In fact, at one point, Mr. Woolums, who's there, the sort of lobbyist, said, you know, they just don't hear enough from all of you in Annapolis for it to make a difference. And then he stopped, and he said, except for Washington County, they always hear from you. So I think that's a real reflection that the work that we've done as a board and with the support of so much staff is really getting people to turn their heads in Annapolis and, I guess, in Baltimore as well. Second, briefly, the two-hour discussion with Dr. Lowery, I'm sure I'll talk more about it as we go through the next few meetings, but a couple of takeaways, other than the one that I mentioned already. A number of board members sort of pushed her on pre-K and whether this was going to end up being an unfunded mandate coming down to the local school systems in terms of both operating costs and capital costs. She seems sensitive to that concern. I think she is on our side in advocating with the state. I think she sees the great value of pre-K. I think she also sees the value in sort of the public-private model that's been used, but does want to try to see where she can expand pre-K, particularly in areas where it's really going to make a difference. So that was one of my main takeaways. The other was, I think she really is listening to what people say. There were a number of people who expressed concerns in their communities about teacher evaluations and that process moving too quickly to include student assessment data as part of a teacher's evaluation. Hearing her response, she clearly has thought a lot about it. I think she's heard from, she's heard what people's concerns are. And she gave a very good answer about what the roadmap is going to be going forward to ensure that we've got at least three years' worth of data to inform the way those evaluation models are going to work before any teacher's evaluation is tied to what a student does on a high-stakes assessment. So my takeaway from that was not just the specific on that issue, but the much broader issue that I think when she hears from people, she does listen. So I'll just pass that along to my colleagues. I'm sure as I have more thoughts about things I heard at the meeting, I'll be glad to share them as well. If nobody else has anything to discuss with the board, I declare the meeting adjourned. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.